Folks, one more change. Item six is back on the calendar.
Alright, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a great Labor Day weekend. The weather was certainly perfect for our beautiful city. So, once again, welcome, and with that, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
We gotta do the roll call first. So, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Roll call, Councilmember Bendel.
Present.
Councilmember Bendel. Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Arama.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Michael Tagney and Assistant Corporation Councilman Ray Kowalski. When have someone to the floor?
I pledge allegiance to the republic, and to the states, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the city manager's update, please.
Our Labor Day weekend events in other summer season was closed out with a great Labor Day weekend event. The Bayfront Sunset Celebration last Friday and the Robinson McMillan Labor Day Run yesterday were enjoyed by all participants. Thank you to all our city staff that make these and all the summer events possible to say. As we all know, there were many challenges this year, yet from the Army Corps of Avengers Project to water rescues and on, our team showed resilience and perseverance. We'd like to thank all the city's employees for another safe season, especially those in beach maintenance, beach park, fire, lifeguard controls, parks of recreation, police and sanitation. The Army Corps work has temporarily suspended due to punishment as the dredge is in need of repair. Work is expected to continue Friday at Roosevelt Avenue to Pacific Avenue. They will then move to the town Hepstead Lido and Point Lookout. Work continues to repair sewer collapse at the intersection of Roosevelt Boulevard and East Park Avenue. The estimated date of completion for all emergency repairs is Friday, September 7th. If you're considering holding groups during this time, or any updates, please visit www.lonbeachny.gov-publicworks. New York State ordinance has met with several departments to discuss policies and procedures. They have asked for and received multiple requests from the payroll department in regards to separation and drawdown payouts. They are now reviewing what potential they receive and will be setting up follow-up meetings for more information. National Prepare This Month is September. We encourage you to join us in preparing for this year's theme. Make and practice your emergency plan and learn a lifesaving skill. This Thursday at City Hall from 7 to 9, the state citizens prepare this war. We'll be here to help you create your plan and provide tools needed to prepare for any type of disaster. Each family participating will receive a free Prepare This Starter kit. On September 17th, also at City Hall from 6 to 8:00 PM, the Council on Alcohol and Drug Dependency will be teaching participants how to safely administer Narcan. Narcan kits will be given with all supplies left. The Recreation Center is closed for its annual maintenance. During the closure, all members can utilize the facilities at the Pre-Fluke Recreation Center and the Ocean Side JCC using your Long Beach Recreation Membership Key Deck. Residents are still welcome to come by to the front desk to register for our fall programs. Repairs are expected to be completed by September 10th or sooner. Summer concerts, rain days, well, the bar concerts on the beach are this week, beginning tonight at 8:00 PM on Edwards. Find the city's brief summer concert series schedule at longbeachny.gov/Beach. Thanks again to DSCNG Long Island, South Nassau Community Hospital, and Puma Autobots for their sponsorship. The 22nd Annual St. John Neil Baldwin Tour will be held on Saturday, September 8th, about children with cancer and special needs. Check your tickets at 8:00 AM on Lights and Boulevard Beach. Visit www.mofoundation.org for more information. The annual 10th Queen of the Beach Kids Surf Contest will be held on Sunday, September 9th, in memory of Danny Bobis and Brian Wood. The event will take place between Riverside and Long Beach Boulevard on the beach. Registration is from 8:30 to 9:30 and is open to all children 15 years old and under. The Long Beach Police Department helps once a certain 73rd Annual Schools Open Drive Carefully Campaign with AAA Northeast. This program alerts drivers with thousands of educational materials to be extra careful behind the wheel of children and their summer vacation return to school. The Long Beach Police Department has again partnered with religious institutions of all faiths in the city to provide enhanced protection against the kinds of threats which have unfortunately become prevalent around the world as of late. As part of this initiative, the department has worked with local houses of worship to create a database of all upcoming holidays and a list of emergency contests. These measures, along with routine, yet irregular time controls of religious institutions, allow the LPTD to provide the visible deterrent to would-be assailants. Better calculate periods of higher risk and additional resources needed and reach your worstest of all pain that they are both welcome and protected in our city by the state.
Alright, lots going on. Can you call the first item?
First item is a public hearing for ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding emergency ambulance services. Commissioner Kevin said it's on a study of ambulance rates of upstate and downstate and found the middle ground. And we were both, we were below the middle ground, so we're just moving ourselves into the middle of the pack and recovering additional resources.
Want to come up, Commissioner? Thank you.
Good evening. I was contacted by our billing company back in the beginning of the summer to let us know that we actually are under billing for some of our transportation. We, as the city, haven't raised our ambulance billing fees since 2011. And they felt that in certain instances, we were leaving money on the table with insurance companies. I asked them to send me data, which I did, and I shared with the city manager. What we did is we took the low end and the high end and worked out an average. And that's where we came up with the numbers. We're not the highest and we're not the lowest. I don't see a large increase in revenue, to be honest with you. A majority of our patients are Medicare and Medicaid. And they have set rates that whatever we bill, we only get paid what they give. But we will see an increase from some private insurance companies and some no-fault ambulance plans. So where there will be an increase in revenue, I don't see it astronomically. But, you know, last year, we collected a little over a million dollars in ambulance billing.
Any questions from the council?
I just have, I just have one question. You said we raised fees these last in 2011, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Arama, so you said that you, as you just said, in terms of the fees being raised earlier than 2011. My question would be, how will this impact, will this have any impact on the Medicare and Medicaid patients who will use this service?
None at all. We take what Medicare and Medicaid pays us, and there is no secondary billing for them.
And can you just clarify a little bit with respect to the impact that this will have on private, those individuals who use private insurance companies?
Private insurance companies, you know, the same way they pay what they pay, but a lot of the insurances, obviously, they pay more than Medicare and Medicaid. We actually have a few agreements with some of the larger insurance companies on what we would accept from them based upon recommendations from our billing company.
What happens if the insurance company does not pay?
Well, typically what happens is if, for whatever reason they don't pay, our billing company will resubmit on behalf of the patient. What end up, we do what we call soft billing. So it never goes to collection. The only time they're authorized to go to collection, there are a few insurance companies, GHI being the main culprit. Well, that will actually, we'll send them the paperwork for billing and they'll send the check to the patient. So the patient has received the money from GHI and hasn't sent it in to the city with the title of the money. And that's the only time.
So, absent that, the burden is not on the patient to pay?
That is correct. Like I said, we do soft billing. Nothing goes to collection. We have on times when people have had issues and we've worked out deals with them. We're working for the residents, with the residents. We don't want to see anybody get hurt. But, you know, the insurance companies do pay for this service, and like, we've been charging since 1993. July 1st, 1993 is when our paid firefighters began the ambulance service that used to be done by Long Beach Hospital. And we began billing at that point, and we've been billing ever since.
Okay, so one of the ambulances that the city uses when it's necessary is South Nassau, correct?
That is correct.
Can they sub that out to senior care, if I understand?
That is correct.
Do these rates apply to that ambulance as well, if that ambulance responds?
They do not.
So does that mean they bill if that ambulance, if that Nassau would bill then?
That is correct.
So when somebody calls, they don't know which ambulance they're calling to get? So, if the rates, well, I guess that's between the insurance company and the billers.
Right. That's throughout Nassau County. If you go over to Island Park and you dial 911, you don't know which ambulance you're going to get. If you get the Island Park Fire Department, it's free. If you get the Nassau County Police ambulance, it's a fee.
Thank you. Just have a quick follow-up. Those collection efforts, problem solved, collection efforts, those have been in place, regardless of whether or not these fees increase, those collection methods have been in place since this was started?
Since 1993.
Anything else from the council? Any comments from the public on the first item? Mr. Lester? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lester, Long Beach. Basically, what you're talking about is a huge increase. Now, you say you have soft billing, which basically means that somebody who gets charged this $1,400 or something like that doesn't need to pay it if the insurance company does? Is that correct? If the insurance company does not, they don't need to pay it?
That's what Commissioner Kevin explained?
I know, that's what I heard. Then why are you be working out deals with them? What does that mean, working out deals with them?
There are people that approach us that want to pay the bill, but they can't necessarily afford it, and will work it out. Or there are people that the insurance company pays a small amount and not a large amount, and they want to pay. People are in that process. We don't, like I said, nothing goes to collection.
So, in other words, if somebody doesn't want to pay, they don't have to pay?
Pretty much.
But the people don't know that. So you have an individual that might be having chest pains or something like that, and he's living on a fixed income, and he doesn't have insurance, and he has to worry about this? Well, they don't know that. How do they know that? How do they know?
I'm fairly certain that they would call and speak with the commissioner, and he would let them.
They're having chest pains! They don't have time to call the commissioner!
Mr. Lester, I'm fairly certain that they don't send the bill while the person is standing there with chest pains.
But the person is hesitant.
I'm sure you realize that as well.
Yes, I know, but what I'm saying is the person's hesitant about calling because they say, "I can't afford $1,400 to go to the hospital."
I'm sure they're not hesitant to call. People want to work out arrangements for bills that they have.
I'm sorry, your experience? Your experience to say they're not hesitant? No, human nature. Yeah, okay. I've spent years on the ambulance, okay? People are worried about stuff like that. People don't go to the doctor because they're worried about bills. They're worried that their insurance isn't going to cover it. Now, for some reason, Nassau-
Sir, let me ask you a question. What would you suggest the alternative be?
Take the billing as it is. What's the reason for such an increase?
There are still people who can't afford it now.
Absolutely, but-
So why are you suggesting me do?
What you're being asked right now is for an increase, a huge increase. And you want to know something? I mean, $32 a mile? Nassau County charges $15 a mile. And you're saying that upstate, they charge 32 a mile?
They actually charge 40.
Well, you know what? I can't believe Nassau County, one of the richest counties in the state, is charging 15, and they're managing to make it. And we have to charge 32, and we have to raise our fees by hundreds of dollars for people, mostly elderly people, on fixed incomes? They have to worry about something like this? What is the purpose? Okay.
Thanks.
Hello?
Anyone else?
Right here.
One second. Come on up. Please state your name and address.
Eddie Vron. So you're raising basic life support fees by 42.3%. You're raising advanced life support level one fees by 37.5%. And advanced life support level two fees by 69.4%. Plus, you're proposing doubling the mileage charge. Do you think that's a bit excessive? And also, in the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget, on the line for ambulance charges, it stays flat at $1.1 million for 2018 and $1.1 million for 2019. So where will this extra increase in fees be coming?
It goes to that line.
So, if we have an extra $100,000, where will that money be spent?
Goes into the general fund.
The general fund. And now, the budget says that paramedic salaries are $499,774,000. Do we know how much, and I believe the Commissioner might be able to answer this, how much other ambulance-related fees are, I mean, other ambulance-related costs are? So how much are we making or losing on the ambulance service?
There is really no way. Medical supplies to vehicles, the wear and tear on the vehicles. You also have salaries of other than the paramedics that man the ambulance. So there is no way, the way the budget works, like you said, the money comes into the general fund. The department is going to need money based upon their needs or expenditures. So there is no way to really quantify it.
And do we know how much we make for each level? Like, we make X amount for basic life support fees, level one, level two? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Hello, everybody.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Dr. Garcia, 225 West Paul Gary. I'm well aware of about the ambulance fees, and if you take it to the hospital. I was a 9/11 first responder, well, I've been cancer, went to the hospital multiple times, ambulance, care, whatever I could do. But, he's right. He's 100% right. Some of the people just don't pay. You know what? It goes right, it's not feasible for sending them collections because they're living on a fixed income, they're getting nothing out of it. Get in line. There are a lot of people on there, they can't afford it, they're on social services. It goes, it's dead. But, as he said, the check goes sometimes, if you got top insurance, to the person that took that ambulance ride, instead of to the city. Well, a lot of people say to me, "Patty, look at this. I got a check for $1,200." I think it was $1,200 a fee. So I says, "Yeah?" He says, "I'm going to keep this." I said, "It cashes it?" I said, "No, you're not." What they're going to do is take you to court, see if you're paying court costs, you're going to lose, and you're going to end up paying $1,800. So everything he said, he's been truthful. So this time, I mean, I took an ambulance last month to the hospital. I mean, a care to the hospital last month. That was my choice. There's choices. You got South Nassau, you got EMTs, I would take these guys before anything, but I took a care. But, on another note, I just, I wanted to shift gears, and I wanted to bring this to your attention, all of you, so take this in consideration. As for our paid firefighters, when they respond to a scene and the house is burning, that homeowner's got food, he's got a mortgage, insurance, and everything. Why can't our city and our attorneys bill the insurance company, State Farm, Allstate, whatever ensures that home for the man hours, the use of our equipment, everything that's involved? Just like they get, they collect on their thing, and they keep the property after the house burns to the ground. Why can't we recoup the money for the man hours putting out that fire and the false alarm? There should be a fee on that. There should be a fee on that. But I'm going to take it and tell you right now. Great lawyers know the law. Smart lawyers know make the law. You have to think about this, because I was brought up in Florida, and they consider this. Just like I put it to the table about the false alarms in Florida, give them a fee. Every time there's a false alarm, these are man hours, tax dollars, false alarms, some did, faulty alarm, they got to pay a fee. So that's what everybody started doing. But our firefighters, paid firefighters, stay on. Everybody's happy across the table and bill their insurance company. You'll be the first one, and it's going to, every city, all of Texas and county across the country. That's what homeowners insurance is all about. Enjoy yourself. Thank you. Beautiful.
Thank you. Ms. McGinnis? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Karen McGinnis. I'm at 102 Pennsylvania Avenue. I want to commend Mr. Kevinz for bringing this up. This is something that a professional, experienced staff in the city manager's office would have helped Mr. Kevinz with sooner than 2018 versus 2011. I think that no one except the elected city council has the right to allow the city to waive fees. I think that a professional, experienced staff in the city manager's office would be able to find a charity that can cover any differences in expenses for hardship cases.
Thank you. Sure. Mr. Garcia?
Long Beach, welcome. I have just one question I have to ask. If the volunteer ambulance responds, does that bill? Okay, thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Jay Garcia, Long Beach. Kind of stole my thunder there a little bit, Councilmember Bendel. I was going to ask, due to the volunteer bill, because I worked for the department for over 22 years, and throughout that period of time, the volunteers' participation in the billing process was sketchy at best, and there was almost a willing non-participation on the volunteer side of the department. And I don't know whether that still goes on, because I don't work anymore. I certainly hope it doesn't. But I can tell you that it was a problem that I complained about on numerous occasions over the course of my 22-plus years working there. The other thing is, Commissioner Kevinz says that we collected a million dollars. Do you know how much we billed out?
Dr. Kevinz, we collected about 66% of what we billed.
Okay, so if we collected a million, let's say we billed out 1.66 or 1.75?
Somewhere in the middle.
Do we have an annual, why, our flex rate is what it is?
That actually is a little higher than the national average.
Okay, very good. And this billing, this is across the board, so when the paid paramedics go out, they submit a paperwork to bill the client for the transport and response?
Every PCR that's generated is sent to the billing company by the on duty lieutenant.
Okay.
Including the malice group.
And again, I got to apologize, I've been there a while. What's the rank in terms of response, when the paid paramedics go out first, then what?
Depending on the manpower count, on the uniform force, if they have seven people working, and they take the second ambulance, and then the third ambulance to South Nassau, and then the fourth ambulance to the volunteer.
Okay, so the volunteers are behind the South Nassau ambulance?
That is correct.
Correct. So there, the South Nassau ambulance is basically jumping the line in terms of opportunities to bill these transportation jobs?
That is correct. During the day, when volunteers are more scarce.
Okay, so the, for lack of a better term, lack of a volunteer response cost the city conservatively $1,000 every time they're unable to respond in South Nassau, take the call in?
If you want to put it that way, yes.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sam Bendel, Long Beach professional firefighters. A few questions. First off, Commissioner Kevinz didn't answer a lot of my questions. Thank you very much for that. Back to the South Nassau ambulance. Do they call under the same billing structure as this emergency ambulance service that the city charter dictates?
We've already asked them, and they know they do not.
They do not. Do they, do they soft bill like the city soft bills?
There is a contractual agreement between them and the city that don't know all the details of the contract, but I believe it is somehow covered in that contract.
So I foiled the contract with South Nassau ambulance, and they said they provide the service for free. But the reason that they continue to provide the service, one of them must be because they are a for-profit company operated by senior care that has different billing structures. So I find that we're putting the city at great risk by having an emergency ambulance service billing that sits outside of the city charter. And I would hate for someone to sue because of credit for billing. So I would hope that we would have that ambulance contract that provides fire department ambulance service to fall under the same parameters as what is being done by the city, hence because they're in the matrix for the fire department. Is that possible?
What is their contract?
I'm not sure. The contract is off, but it's something we can definitely look into when I'm discussing with them.
Sure, thank you.
You said you looked into the fees and rates throughout the state. And you also said that we have some contracts with the actual insurance companies. Are any of our current contracts that we have agreed upon pricing with the insurance company greater or less than what we currently have proposed prior to the changes?
I don't have that information.
Okay, that's fine. What about comparing, comparison, Medicare is the highest rate, Medicaid as well? How do we compare to the rates for Medicare and Medicaid with our prior billing structure and our current increase?
They pay what they pay, right?
Right. If they have a set amount, obviously, raising our rate isn't going to raise for the payoffs. It will be a greater write-off for those patients.
So what is the rate for Medicare reimbursement for an ALS-1, BLS-1, ALS-2?
I don't have the Medicare/Medicaid reimbursement.
80%?
No, it's wrong, it's wrong, sir. I have the rates actually, and the rates for Medicare/Medicaid are much lower than what we currently have. Just for the public and the city council, Medicare only pays out $419 in comparison to our new proposal of $1,445. They pay for ALS-1, $498 in comparison to our new proposed $1,675. And they pay for ALS-2, where we're charging now $21.50, only $720. So we're increasing our rates more than 200 times, right? The percentage increase is almost 200 times for what Medicare, which is our largest biller, will pay us. And I think that some people may be discouraged, especially our senior population, with this increase. If we look at the changes for Medicaid, Medicaid only pays out $168 in comparison to our proposed fee of new one of $1,445. And they only pay $209 for ALS-2, which is $2,150. So we are literally, I don't even know how to do the math, 10 times the amount, 1,000% increase of what Medicaid pays. So while there may be rates that are greater throughout the state, I think considering the fact that we have a higher senior population and the fact that we can't prove that our current contracts that are dictated with the billing companies that actually have an agreement for payment, that their rates are not higher than what we currently receive, it's almost a mood issue that we're raising our rates. Right now, from 43%, 38%, 69%, 113% are our current rates. Medicare only pays out $7.37 per miles.
Thank you.
While in closing, I'd like to say that this should be tabled, and if the city has and needs any assistance, I would be glad to offer my services as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bendel, just have to challenge your man. He said it's 200 times the rate, it's three times.
200%? And you say 200 times? Which one?
There's a lot of times that people speak at the podium very factually.
Sure, which one? Which one I'll talk about?
You said the Medicare for the most expensive vehicle, which one, versus our, it's three times, not 200 times?
So ALS-2 for Medicaid, right?
I just wanted to make that point.
No, but the point is, I can show you my formula, and I can even leave this for you. If you do the math, we take the difference in the starting and the new increase, divide by the starting.
Either way, Medicaid and Medicare are going to pay what they're going to pay. They don't pay doctors enough, they don't pay hospitals enough, they don't pay anyone enough. We all know that. We all know our healthcare system is broken. Our rates do not affect the Medicare/Medicaid rate. We all know our healthcare system is broken. Our rates do not affect the Medicare, Medicaid rate.
While we don't hard bill when a person is provided with Medicare, Medicaid as the only form of insurance sees a bill. For twenty-one hundred dollars and they only get reimbursement for two hundred or seven hundred and twenty, they're gonna fail the need.
Medicaid pay directly to the, to the user.
Not, not only, not always. Is it always?
Medicare, Medicaid always go to the.
If they don't fill out a bill form?
We, uh, we send the information, information form to the patient for them to supply as they go in turn.
So it goes to the patient, so the patient will see the bill.
Your, your time is up, sir.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on the, raising the rates for ambulances for insurance companies? Nope?
I have another question for Commissioner Kevins.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Can you just speak to, in light of what was just stated, can you just speak to the rationale for item C in terms of the level two for the life support, in terms of the rate?
Well, just so you know, we, we propose twenty-one fifty. The high in New York State is twenty-nine hundred. So we're actually far below and just, I have all the numbers here just to make you aware. So for ALS-1, we're raising it to sixteen seventy-five. The high in New York State is twenty-one twenty-five. Uh, for ALS-2, we've gone to twenty-one fifty, the high is twenty-nine hundred. For BLS, uh, we're raising it to fourteen forty-five, the high is seventeen ninety. And on the mileage, uh, we're raising it to thirty-two dollars, the high in New York State is forty dollars.
And then secondly, um, you, you talked about the fact that at this time, we did not have like a report that was available. Do you anticipate in the future that you'll have some kind of annual reports that we can assess the amount of service and how much monies are actually being collected?
Uh, monthly, I submit a report to the controller's office on what we bill, what we collect. Uh, that's a monthly report. I, I can forward it to the city manager. And he can disperse it to the council, so you can see what we collect by month. Obviously, if a patient's transported in July, we're probably not gonna get paid for that transportation till September or October. But you'll, you'll see how there's an uptick, obviously, billing during the summer months and slower for the winter months.
Thank you.
Just one, before you leave, one quick question. Billing companies, how do they get paid? Do they take a percentage of the fee?
They get a percentage for the majority. I can tell you that last year, they, they were paid approximately sixty-five thousand dollars for the, uh, a little over one million dollars we collected. And they're, it's based upon an RFP that we put out every few years whenever the contract is up and.
So they give roughly six and a half percent?
I, I believe you could, six percent rings a bell.
Okay. Seeing no hands, I call the next item.
One more?
Nope. I'm sorry.
Jim Kirkland, Long Beach, New York.
Thank you.
Um, when South Nassau shows up for, uh, a call, um, I was curious as to whether or not they hard bill, uh, the individual as a representative of the fire department and if so, or does, well, in a sense, where does the money go if they do a hard billing? Does it, are they representing the fire department or is it going to South Nassau?
No, they're a private company. Right, it goes to the contract that they have with, uh, what's the name of it?
I'm talking about South Nassau Hospital, uh, ambulances.
I'm sorry?
I'm talking about South Nassau ambulances.
Yeah, well, they use Medicare, so that doesn't, we don't see any of that, any of those funds.
So it goes right to South Nassau?
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing no, oh, Ms. Preston?
Liz, Liz Preston, Long Beach. Is this a, is this for voting tonight or is this just, it's a public hearing?
Uh, it's for voting as well.
Scott?
It's for voting.
If we can just, if I could just recommend, since Scott has said that they're not going to have vote collections, that that would be put somewhere in the, when you vote, that that would be a line item?
I'm sorry, what?
Adding that the city will not take the patient's collection. You're saying it's assault?
Okay.
Can you make a motion?
Can we hear from Legal if this is something that we can do with respect to the resolution?
Uh, I would need to look into it further. Uh, right now, at this juncture, it doesn't sit low with me. That's my gut instinct. Uh, you know, insurance companies are paying this out, you know, we should be enforcing things equally. Uh, I don't think there should be discriminatory language inserted into the ordinance. That, that would be my opinion. Whatever the billing practices are, the billing practices are, but I think from a legislative standpoint, they should just stay as is.
Arguably, the more appropriate thing to do would be to have an actual policy in place as to when and if and how these arrangements are made with different individuals who are unable to pay. But I think if we put that in the legislation, why would any insurance company or Medicaid or Medicare pay their bill if they know we're not going to go after them? So I, I, I do.
But we're, we're currently not.
But I do think that the appropriate thing would arguably be to have a more consistent policy. And that's, I think, something that I would ask the city manager to work with Legal to look into a consistent policy, just with some parameters so that we know when and if, um, arrangements, I don't think deal is the right word, arrangements for payment are or are not made and if there's a threshold or not a threshold.
I think what Commissioner Kevins means by soft billing is that we're permitted to settle individual collection lines. But we can't set a policy that certain people are in charge, but people with insurance are.
So, so the, the billing department, the billing company that we're utilizing then does send the collection notices?
I believe Commissioner Kevins said it doesn't go to collections.
It does not. So moving forward, how can we assure that that's not going to happen again?
I think Commissioner Kevins and the fire department, since the inception of this program in nineteen ninety-three, has done a great job of getting basically the national average.
I'm not saying that they are not doing a great job. I am not ever, ever going to say that. I'm talking about getting the money. I'm talking about the residents.
Right, I think that's the point of this legislation, is the city of Long Beach is leaving money on the table with insurance companies, because some of them are willing to pay more. It isn't to, you know, necessarily stick residents with a higher bill, because by and large, people are insured in some form or another, whether it's Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurance.
I would just like to say that I'd like to see that stated clearly in the reservation that you'll be voting upon. Or otherwise, table it until, then to new language if you have it. Thank you.
Okay, so in light of, uh, the conversation that's been held, and I'm going to put a motion on the floor to table this item for this evening.
Motion to table item number one. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Going to table, Councilmember Vando.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Vando?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Next person to time it?
No.
Person to more on?
No. So, next item?
Second public hearing is for the ordinance submitted.
Sorry, thank you, Ms. Preston.
Okay, so our second item is a public hearing for the ordinance submitted by the city of Long Beach regarding.
Did you close the hearing?
Yeah, I closed the hearing. Close the hearing.
More, more, don't make the comments.
Sorry.
More, don't make the comments.
I, I, uh, there was no hands up.
I only have some questions.
No, it, it's improper. The hearing was closed. I apologize. You have, you have an opportunity.
There's another.
You'll have an opportunity to speak on this.
That's, that's not fair.
All right, I can reopen the hearing. So please come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Nate Arskin? Okay, so, um, my question is, if a bystander calls an ambulance for somebody who's having a medical emergency, who's, uh, who's billed?
Patient.
Patient, okay. So I've seen on the buses, uh, there are good Samaritan laws for, uh, for people having overdoses. Uh, if someone's having an overdose and their minister Narcan, are they billed an ambulance for it? I don't know that.
Yes, they have to be transported to the hospital. Narcan is a temporary measure. They still need to be evaluated by a doctor.
Okay, so hypothetically, you have some people doing heroin somewhere, one's overdosing, the other one doesn't wanna call the ambulance because they know that their friend can't afford it, but they rather spend the money on drugs. Do you think this might be a deterrent to actually saving lives?
Absolutely not.
I mean, I think, I think Mr. Lester made a good point when he said that this actually, like, that ambulance fees do deter people from calling ambulances. Uh, so I think it's something to consider.
Thank you. Ms. Blinchett?
Ms. Blinchett, actually, it's a good follow-up to that. Um, victims of violence, rape victims, are they charged? Are they being given these bills if you guys are transporting them? If someone comes to, uh, or they call for an ambulance, uh, because they've been raped, are they being sent these bills?
Rape victims not getting ambulance. They're transported by the police for the continuity of evidence.
Even if there's like severe physical damage to the person?
Well, not, no, the leg was cut off during the rape, we would, we wouldn't need an ambulance.
That was really not inappropriate.
Well deserved.
That was really.
Yes, they would be billed.
No, but that comment about if their leg was cut off. I'm talking about if someone was violently raped or, or injured in a sexual manner and they need to go to the sane nurse, which is much further than South Nassau. You know, are they gonna be charged this thirty-two dollars per mile?
I think what the commissioner was saying is if the situation doesn't necessitate, isn't a serious medical injury that requires an ambulance, the police have to do it in order to preserve whatever evidence they can gather and keep it coming possible.
Okay, and is it protocol too that you are going to, are you going to South Nassau still or are you taking them up to, not sure?
Same. National University Medical Center for same.
Okay. Uh, South Nassau doesn't have a same?
No, it's at National University Medical Center for same.
Okay, and they're not getting billed for transportation costs?
If they have insurance, the insurance company is getting billed.
If they're in an ambulance.
Okay, but if they have to go by one of our ambulances, they are gonna get charged?
The insurance company. The people are not receiving a bill. We can keep the tip, we can keep the cash in this, but people are not getting a bill. Insurance company is the only one getting it.
Okay, so like the person who's overdosing on heroin? Okay. That, that comment is really not, okay, that was not cool at all.
Anyone else? Seeing no hands, I closed the hearing.
Our second public hearing is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding housing and property rehabilitation and conservation code for mortgage and default registry.
This is a very interesting concept that we, uh, we have to thank Adam Habeck, who he brought to our attention during, our attention during the budget process. And very basically, you take a list of all the houses that are in default, either people were, didn't repair after Sandy, um, left the area and the houses are lying foul. They have, there's a, this, this legislation would require them to register with the city. The benefit of this is the annual fee is five hundred dollars to register with the city. This company that we're going to hire, it was a sole bidder, is going to give the city four hundred of the five hundred, keep the registry going, keep us updated on the status of the property anytime it changes hands. So it's a great way for us to collect a lot of data regarding these houses, keep, um, them in a current condition where they're not a fight to the neighborhood. And at the same time, uh, we cover revenue from the banks. I'm sure there's a lot of people trying to fight, fight the banks.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, I could just add to that. As one of the city's prosecutors, one of the greatest difficulties we encounter is with these zombie homes. Because basically, a bank will put a list pending on the house, which prevents it from being sold to somebody else. The original owner is long gone. The bank technically isn't the owner of the property and they don't wanna have anything to do with it. But it's legislation like this that gives us a contact person in a potentially massive organization like a bank. It lets us hold them accountable and I think the five hundred dollar fee, uh, to the bank just, really just covers the cost of the billing department to ensure that these organizations, uh, comply in their various inspections and so forth.
If I can just, Commissioner, sorry, I know you. Just, I just have a couple of questions, cause I know this is gonna go through your office, um, and your department. If you could just explain, I think most people understand it, but what exactly is the term zombie house or zombie residence? What is it?
Typically, a zombie house is a house that the owner has walked away from the house, doesn't want anything to do with it, and told the bank to pretty much have fun. The problem is in New York State, it can take up to ten years for a bank to foreclose on a property. And for that timeframe, there's no owner and the bank doesn't wanna take responsibility for the property because they don't own it yet. And the banks don't wanna own property. We had this big problem a few years back when the bottom fell out of the mortgage industry. And one of the most frustrating things to me is, is trying to get ahold of somebody at a bank to find who's responsible. There are times I've spent an entire day on the phone getting hung up on, getting transferred, getting different eight-hundred numbers, to, to not get anywhere and find anybody responsible for a house. There are certain things we as a city do to these properties. We can go there and cut the grass after we've given a prop a notice and we put the, uh, bill on the tax bill and the banks do pay it. But our beach maintenance guys have better things to do than be cutting somebody's lawn. And we need to hold the banks accountable. This is a great tool for us to now have, will have a registry of all these properties. And it's not a lot. I would say there's less than a hundred in Long Beach. But they are a problem. You live across the street from it, the grass is two feet high. Every day, we get another complaint. We go out there, we put in violation, the owners nowhere to be found. We send it to beach maintenance and every two months, it's kind of a reoccurring issue. But this will give us that tool to now have a contact person, a bank, a mortgage service company to hold responsible and for them to deal with it, so we don't have to deal with it.
Mr. Kevins, I've had experience with your department dealing with one of these zombie houses. I've seen it firsthand. Can you describe some of the impact it has on the community? For example, what I experienced, wild animals are infiltrating the house, rotting food, other debris, the smell, the impact on the neighbor, um, community, the block, health and safety issues?
That, that, the case you're referring to is one of the worst we had. And it was, we had to end up going in there, all city employees had to go in there and clean up some of this stuff to make it better for the neighbors. I mean, that, that's our job, that's what we're here for. But if there's somebody else that can be held accountable, so be it. They should be held accountable. But like I said, we will do what we need to do. But that's the biggest issue is, is the blight on the neighborhood. Whether the overgrown grass, an unsecured house, raccoons, it, it, the, the odors.
Squatters.
Squatters.
Not a boy.
It, the list can go on and it's very frustrating. In my twenty-some odd years in the building department, it's always been the most frustrating thing is to find somebody to contact on these zombie homes.
Have we always had problems with, or was it exacerbated after Sandy?
It was actually, it became worse after the bottom fell out of the mortgage industry. We've always had a couple, but more, it was more absentee landlords than anything else. But, you know, once the bottom fell out of the mortgage, uh, industry a few years back and then Sandy has definitely added to it. But what is surprising is not as many people walked away after Sandy as you'd think. Because they had the opportunity to sell the house to New York Horizon for good money and a lot of people did do that. Uh, and at least we have people to hold accountable for those properties if they haven't done anything to them yet. But, you know, I would say we have definitely less than a hundred of these zombie homes. There probably is fifty or sixty. But, you know, this registry will now give us an exact, pretty much an exact number and be able to work with that. But, you know, this registry will now give us an exact, pretty much an exact number, and be able to work with that.
What's, what's the process for the, uh, banks to now know that they have to register specific homes?
Well, if this, uh, new ordinance gets passed and, and then we hire this, uh, private contractor, they're the ones that go out and do all the research to get, and they will do the notification to all the lending institutions that they need to register. And they'll give us that information, and obviously, if a lending institution fails to register, then we're going to put them in violation.
Right, okay.
And how does that company that does that work get paid?
Honestly, I'm not sure of the process. There was an RFP for it.
There, there is an RFP, uh, Councilmember Bendow, I believe they are going to be taking twenty percent of fees collected.
Okay, twenty percent of the fees we collect, or?
They're, they're collecting the fees, and they will be taking twenty percent of whatever they collect.
So twenty percent of the taxes?
Yes. I, I think the next council meeting, that idea is going to be on the agenda, because obviously, we need to have a servicer after the law, so that the servicer knows kind of what parameters are existing for, for this program.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Ms. Blanchett?
Allison Blanchett, you keep saying zombie homes, but in this legislation, it also says homes that people are occupying, the mortgages are in default. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm not going to say that this is a good idea or a bad idea. Um, I'm just going to say it's extremely redundant and unnecessary. Two thousand sixteen, December two thousand sixteen, um, New York enacted the Abandoned Property Neighborhood Relief Act. And that, basically, prior to that act, legislation like this made sense. But now the state is basically taking what you, I mean, this is already a state thing. So this is...
The building department has significant expenses following up on these zombie homes, and this kind of makes the banks a little bit more responsible because they have to sign up on this registry. They're required to inspect their homes, and it's going to cost the building department time and money to go and follow up on these problems. That's the point of the fee.
Right, but they already have to register with the state, and aren't banks required to notify the clerk when there is a home in foreclosure?
Um, I'm not sure that they're required to notify the clerk. Uh, and the county clerk is where the land records are, so they notify them. Um, but basically...
So, okay, so can't you just use their database? Why do we need to have our own? This, again, it's redundant and unnecessary?
Because this gives us the opportunity to collect fees from the banks for the expenses that we incur because of them.
But you wouldn't be incurring expenses if you didn't have to deal with this whole database thing?
There's, there's no mechanism to charge them two hundred and fifty dollars every six months, currently.
Who put this on the agenda? Who put this on your...?
I did.
Yeah, but you said that it came to your attention through someone?
Oh, yes, Adam Haber.
Adam Haber. I like that guy. Um, and about how many homes? And are these just residential? Or are you also doing commercial?
Full foreclosure.
It's both?
Every foreclosure.
Every, but it says that it's not just for, like, it's not just foreclosures, it's also saying houses that are deemed vacant, but people can still be living in them? This is just an overly vague...
Uh, there'll be every house that's been for mortgage process, the pending is filed, the banks have to register the property.
With the state in addition to the local municipality putting more burden on them. Um, okay, so if this, the point of this is to stop blighted homes? Don't we already have some kind of blighted home code?
If I can just, if I can just respond to that, I think we're missing some of the points here. The state might have its own registry, but the state is not responsible for coming down, and if residents begin to complain about, for example, a house that's abandoned on their street, it's our beach maintenance that has to go and take care of whatever it is. I remember very clearly the issue that Councilman Mendel mentioned. We received a number of emails and comments, and it really became an issue. Um, we probably receive emails about homes that are abandoned, I would say, on a rather regular basis, and I think this gives us an opportunity not to have to weed, not to have to do the research. What happens if something isn't on the state registry? I don't know who enforces that. We're going to hopefully pick a vendor so that we have some accountability to ensure that these houses that are in our community, we don't have to depend on the state registry. If my understanding, I didn't do a complete analysis of the state registry, but ours is much more detailed. It does put a responsibility, and honestly, when there's money involved, the banks are more inclined to, to focus on it. And this is a way to protect our residents. We don't have to have someone from the building department spend an entire day on the phone trying to figure out which bank is the bank that happens to have this property at any given moment. It can change five or six times within a ten-year foreclosure.
And that's why you referred to the state.
Let me, let me finish, okay? I'm just trying to explain to you, because you're saying it's redundant. I'm saying that it's not redundant. The state is responsible to come in and clean it. It's not state employees that have to go into an abandoned house and figure out what to do with raccoons that are bothering the neighbors, or a terrible stench that's coming, or moat grass. It's us, it's the city, we incur the fee. So at this point, why wouldn't we want to do that quicker, to respond faster, not only to our residents, and at the same time, make sure that there's some accountability for it?
So, um, I just see it as extremely redundant with this, and just adding more layers to this extremely bloated, yeah, we both, extremely bloated government we have here. Um, I'm very concerned about people who are still living in their homes, and they've started, they've defaulted on their mortgage. This gives you the right to enter their homes. Um, and then what about the blighted homes, and the ones with raccoons, and multiple, and, excuse me, you can let me finish. What about the homes where there's multiple paths? There's, you know, a home a couple streets down, people are, are, are living there, but the grass is crazy. I got a, you know, look, Diana from this weird lady who has a big unicorn in her backyard, that's just, just kidding, Nora. Sorry, anyways. Um, but what about, you know, homes where people are living there, and it looks blighted? Like, you know, if the point of this is to stop homes from looking like crap, then, like, you're only addressing these ones that, you know, this, this weird list here, which is, again, redundant and unnecessary. And this is a carbon copy of Babylon's. This is a carbon copy of their policy.
It's very similar to Babylon's, yeah.
That's a carbon.
Anyone else? Mr. Osceys?
Dr. Osceys, two twenty-five West Market, I mean, West, okay, excuse me. I couldn't agree with you more, and this should go through because there's squatters going in there. I'm not going to say the location at this time, but it's right here at school. There's squatters in there smoking crack, shooting heroin, and people put, invested six hundred thousand dollars in their houses, and they got to deal with this? Law enforcement was called down multiple times. It's a waste of our tax, the taxpayers' money, the law enforcement's, their hands are tied. Taxpayers back there, the hands are tied, okay? The banks don't care because it's a write-off. They can drag it out. I know a guy's in foreclosure twelve years, he's laughing at the system. They're not in the, they're not in the real estate business, the banks. I promise you that, they'll tell you that. Or car repo, they don't care. They sell their rental shit. But this needs to be addressed, because it's an eyesore, and public people are shooting dope in there, they're doing whatever they're doing in there, and it's not good. It's a burden on the city and the taxpayers. Uh, I believe he's right. Beach maintenance got to go out there and cut the grass when they complain. The building department was getting complaints. The police department's giving the plain complaints. These people burn down the house, they walk away. Now Florida, what do they do? They pass a law down there, tear it down. They told the bank, and you know what the bank said? We don't care. Crack houses, tish out, and squirt it, tear it down, condemn it, get to tear it down. And they maintain it, and they bill the banks for the grass. They just cut the grass. They're called crack houses, drug houses. So I agree a hundred percent with you. I think the fee should be higher. I live in a, I live in a neighborhood, I invest six hundred thousand in a house, and plus my house by probably eight hundred thousand. I'm going to be one angry guy. I don't think I'm going to call the police anymore, but there's not going to be squatters in there either. T, Canada, tear gas, I just throw in there. I'll clear them out myself. So I raise call street justice. Agree a hundred percent with you. Do it!
Thank you. Let me say to Ford? Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address.
Denise Ford, off Thirty-Six Ohio Avenue. Um, when you first spoke, brought this up, this issue up, um, you know, Commissioner Tackney, you had said that an RFP, I guess, was issued, and only one responded. So, um, are you prepared to hire somebody to do this? Or let, like, let, um, Councilwoman Diamond said that you're waiting to select a vendor. We are along with this.
I have every intention of putting the vendor on the next agenda.
Okay, and, uh, when was his RFP issued?
Uh, midsummer.
Okay, and how long was it open for?
I'm not sure.
And it's FOIL, right, so I can look to see when you wrote. Um, what is the name of the company?
Prochamps, out of Melbourne, Florida.
Out of Melbourne, Florida, and, um, I guess they're the only ones that do something like this? So they'll, they have personnel up here that will work in New York?
Yes, it, it, it's really a new industry, and we're just jumping on the bandwagon.
Okay, and would we be able to get the list of the principals who, uh, own this company? And if they have any affiliation with any companies here in New York?
I believe they sent in a, what, a file that includes that information, if you want to file for it.
Okay, and I'm sure that Adam Haber has no connection whatsoever with this company.
Not, not whatsoever.
Okay, all right, and then I guess, you know, just to, uh, follow up on what Allison Blanchett said. I think that she brings up a good point when we talk about the levels of government, and we do have, you know, the county, we have a land bank, and I'm, I'm not saying don't do this, because I know that in many instances, people will appreciate the fact that houses that have been left vacant for so many years are bringing down property, their property values. Um, there, it seems to be applied on the neighborhood, let's clean everything up. But I think that, um, what we need to do is all of us try to coordinate, because, you know, it was Senator Kaminsky who did, uh, champion that legislation that she referenced in regard to getting registration, um, with state, you know? So that I think that what we should do also is that perhaps, you know, join, uh, with Kaminsky, with his office, and try to find out his or her way of all of us, you know, and even our county clerk, to be able to talk about all of this, to try to have a, a common database, so that we're able to get this information, and that maybe, uh, instead of paying a company that's in Florida, we can, um, keep our work here, right here in, uh, the city of Long Beach. Um, then also, when you look at, um, when we talk about the beach, uh, people that have to go clean up the houses afterwards, why don't we just bill the banks for the, um, the banks that own these properties, if we are sending personnel out to clean up, to take care, or whatever we have to do? Why aren't we billing the banks? Why aren't we sending them a bill?
The real problem with this later forward is the banks don't own the properties because they're in some state of foreclosure. In other words, they prevented a sale by filing a legal document with the county clerk's office, and they're in the process of foreclosure. And I've had the same interactions Commissioner Kevins has with these, with these banks. First off, you have to spend hours on the phone all day to get to the right person, if you can even find the right person. And then their response is, we can't enter the property because we're the bank and we don't own it.
All right, so then...
This legislation is solvable, isn't it? Right, and, and that, the, the mortgage chief frequently changes, that's another issue. Another issue is that, uh, paying for the building department's time, for beach maintenance's time, for everyone's time, including my own time involved trying to remedy this situation, I think it's, it's really a bit, so I did some quick math here. It, it's five hundred dollars a year. Commissioner Kevins said there's a hundred houses, that's fifty thousand dollars in fees, and after the...
Oh, I'm not arguing with what you're doing.
Yeah, so it's ten thousand dollars to maintain this great service where we have a contact available.
So how, how is it if they don't, if nobody owns, owns up to ownership of this property, the banks? How's this company going to be able to, uh, take fees from? Who pays the fees for the registration of the houses?
The banks do. This, this legislation enables the city to charge the banks that don't necessarily own the property yet a fee when they file a list pending for the mortgage, otherwise in default. I believe that's how it's supposed to work.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Please do.
We do, when we clean a property, we do put a lien through the tax, tax department on the property, which is eventually the payment for by the bank when they pay the mortgage, or at the time of sale of the property.
So then, so we're able to recoup some of the, you know, the monies that we expended by sending people out there, stuff like that.
I can wait until you use the...
And you currently hold the building department's... Just state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Michael Laurie, Long Beach. Um, can we edit deposit to this, uh, registry, a deposit amount? The reason I'm mentioning that is because I think the Town of Hempstead and other municipalities do it or consider it. Um...
Do you, I, I just...
I just thought you, I wanted to...
I was about to respond, because I reviewed the Town of Hempstead's, uh, law that they passed last year, and theirs was a little bit different than ours, or the year before, whenever they passed it. Their is a bond. It's, it's kind of structured a little bit differently. I didn't completely understand it, but it's not, it's not a simple registry. The banks actually have to post a bond for a certain amount of money, and then it's, I think, from, from my review of it, that it's drawn down that way, but this is not a process. This is just a, a fee. It's, it's also a little bit easier, I think, to manage and maintain. I don't, I can't, I don't know why they did it that way, but I know that it's a different type of legislation, that it's, it's addressing the same issue, but it, it's, they approached it a little bit differently than we did.
I understand, and two fifty is really not much, and I'm really focusing in on the eventual bank, or all the banks that are really going to be picking up this debt, we, we know that. The second question is, and I don't really answer to this, because it's related. If I own a property and I, I decide I'm going to let my mortgage be in default, but I'm going to rent it, and it's going to take five years, four years till the banks catch up, and the tenant isn't living there and paying me the rent, and I'm not going to pay the, the bank. If this goes on for four, five, six, seven, eight years, and assuming that a notice gets sent to clear, clean up your property, and you do clean up the property, what, uh, let me just backtrack. Is there a mechanism to, to deal with that issue? And I don't know, uh, it could be dealt here or another way, but I, I believe that is happening. I think it's important that something be dealt with here, and I'm sure the tax department, who bills every year, has a record of who the current bank is. I just don't think personally, two fifty is adequate. I, I think you, on particular properties, that's my personal opinion. You send somebody out for the day of beach maintenance, they're probable, or whoever is going to clean it up, you'll probably go through that two fifty. What happens, is there a mechanism where you board up the house to prevent what Mr. Osceys was saying about people going in and shooting up? Can you board it up so if drug addicts or whoever go back in there, they could be, you know, arrested?
Commissioner Kevins runs a very tight ship in the building department, and if somebody has a broken window, and Commissioner Kevins knows about it, he could rest assured that, you know, he will notify the owner to have it boarded up, or beach maintenance will sometimes go and board it up if it's a serious safety hazard.
Okay, and I, I get the impression that Councilwoman Diamond and Councilman Mendel feel that this would help alleviate that problem that you had in the past. Is that, would that be accurate? Okay, thank you.
I think that, I can just respond to your comment. I think that one of the important things about this legislation is it speeds up the process. Then, once there's, the registry actually exists, first of all, it's not necessarily complaint driven. Right now, if, if property is becoming an issue, it's when, when the, it's my understanding, I'm not in the building department, but it's driven by complaints. A lot of people are, somebody calls and complains, somebody goes out and... I think this speeds up the process, so it's not, it doesn't become, I mean, look, some residents don't want to complain. They don't want to have an issue, so they'll just kind of, just be avoid about it until it becomes a major issue. And this makes that process a little bit faster. I don't, I don't want to speak for Councilwoman Mendel. I don't, I don't want to speak for Councilwoman Mendel, but for me, one of the things that I think this legislation does is speeds up the process for us to be able to ensure that houses don't become a serious problem before it becomes something larger than it has to be.
And from my take, I see this as taking the step, one step further. If the state started the process, this empowers the city to continue that process with safety and health for the community, for all of our employees who have to go in there before it gets too bad, before it gets to a point where it's biomatter.
Right.
And it also gets the attention of the banks, who otherwise have no incentive other than waiting until it goes to a full foreclosure, because until that point, they may not have any skin in the game. This now puts them on our radar and forces them to pay us attention and/or be financially liable.
And I do want to give credit to the, the app that you submitted, you know, your property issues, because as the building department, I imagine, or wherever it's directed, I have nothing but, personally now, but positive results through that whole application. That's why I was kind of surprised at what you would describe it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jim Kirkwood, Long Beach. I think it's good that you're addressing this because nothing worse than having an unsightly neighbor. But I, it's one of the things I wanted to point out also, that while you're focusing predominantly on the zombie homes, a lot of homeowners who have their homes up in the air, even though the front may be a mess because of all the construction going on, the backyards very often are already even touched. And so they could become very overgrown, there could be trash back there, which is now unsightly to the neighbor next door. And so that might be something you want to include in the surveillance of these properties, even though they're not abandoned. It would be something.
These old property owners are still responsible to maintain their.
A lot of them relocated, they're not even here. So, you know, they're not going to necessarily know what's going on. Although if it was me, I would want to, you know, certainly come around and see how things are going.
That's the wonderful thing about this legislation is, you know, if they're not around, assuming they have a mortgage, probably not paying the mortgage. And this will give us an opportunity to have the bank be responsible for any, any property issues.
Well, in the meantime, you have, you know, there were 140,000 homes that were affected on Long Island under Sandy. That's a lot of properties that you would not want to ignore if it had the same, the same issues.
The building department certainly deals with lots of complaints about construction sites. They do go out and they will, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Kaminsky, you will reach out to owners that have, you know, we've had, people have construction debris out in the street, in the sidewalk, in the backyard, they're still responsible, and that's complaint driven.
Yes, that, we already cover that in our property maintenance code, and typically if the house is under construction or immediately reshacked, contractor records, putting him on notice to clean the property, and if he's not done that, we follow up with violations.
Thank you.
Also, there is the reclaimed properties that Sandy has taken possession of, not Sandy, but New York Rising has taken possession of. In that case, it's no longer owned by the original owner, the banks aren't involved. The property has been taken by New York Rising. Is there issues with that sort of a situation also that's been occurring?
I believe Commissioner Kaminsky has contacts within New York Rising that will maintain the property.
All the properties that New York Rising had purchased have been resold at auction, except for one. There's only one house left in Long Island, by New York Rising. Everything else has been sold at auction.
Thank you.
And to conclude, you were looking into ProChamps, I think is the name you, you mentioned?
ProChamps.
They're being sued by multiple homeowners in New Jersey currently. Apparently, this registry has been deemed or is being challenged as being unconstitutional. And so prior to engaging them, you might want to speak to somebody from New Jersey and see how that's progressing.
Ms. Peoria. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ms. Peoria, Long Beach, New York. Just a quick question. How long do we, do they stay on this list, this registry? What's, I mean, how long? Sorry.
It's as long as they're in default.
As long, and how long is the, what's the average length of somebody being in default?
It depends. It's driven by legal system. As Ms. Diamond said, it could be as long as 10 years.
So if I'm a property owner living next to a lighted house, or it's loaded clean, and that property is sitting there, my property value diminishes. So what's the, what's the, what's the benefit to a person living next door, that they have to live next door to this unsightly mess for 10 years?
The benefit to this legislation is so that we know who owns, who's responsible for the home.
So can we put a cap on it? My question is, can we put a cap? When you're putting this together, and you're getting a registry together, and you're going to send it out to this, the county, the state, or the attorney, or the banks, or whoever is handling it, can we turn around and say this has got to be cured within X period, X period of time, or else we're going to take over via eminent domain, or we're going to condemn the property? I mean, we've done eminent domain here in Long Island, so it shouldn't be a shocker to anybody. But that said, we should, we should be allowed to, we should, we should be able to put a timeframe on then moving, moving the process along, no?
I think that it's governed, I don't know the answer to your question, but I think it's governed by the near state's foreclosure law. It's unfortunate that there's an incredible backlog if you go to the National Supreme Court, and there are, there are some foreclosures that go very quickly that can take.
But there's no, nothing we can do, is there?
I don't, I don't know that there's.
That's the point of this legislation. The foreclosure process happens outside of us. That's how we're in New York, and we have no control over it. This would at least give us an opportunity to get in there while that's pending, get the bank's attention, who usually waits until the foreclosure auction is done, and get some type of remedy, whether we throw a lawsuit to the bank, put it away, or short circuit it.
And I'm just, I'm just trying to see if there's a way we could move another little short circuit to say, you know, I mean, again, we're going to, if somebody's on a registry for five or 10 years, you know, $500, big deal to some of these banks, it's nothing.
The goal is to set up some type of deterrent to get that touch, because none is in place now.
I, I'm not disputing what you're trying to accomplish here. I'm just trying to figure out what else we can do. If you're living next door to that, I don't know when that's falling. I would also ask the question, what are the fees in comparison, we have, we have properties I know, and I've double scott on, on property close to where I live, where it's light, from a, from a commercial property standpoint, what are the fees in comparison that we charge on a commercial property to what we're charging on these banks now? The means for, for somebody who's not a homeowner, where we have to send somebody out and they have to, they get fined, what are the fines for?
Typically, if we clean the property that's not a fine, we actually, beach maintenance prepares a bill based upon the man hours used, the hourly rate of that worker, and including the equipment they use. And it's, and that bill is then given to the tax department, equipment on the taxes.
Right, so, so I'm, I'm just curious about.
It depends on how long it takes and how bad it is. I've had residential properties that the bill's been over $2,000. I've had some that have been $500. I can tell you a private lair is a lot cheaper than the city's doing.
I, I.
But, you know, it doesn't, whether it's commercial or residential, it depends on the amount of work and equipment needed to do the job.
So this $250 fine that we impose on top of.
That, that fine is if we summons them and they go into court, that separate and distinct from the bill for the work we do.
Okay, okay, okay.
And separate and distinct from the $250 fee for the registry here, something else?
Right, well, I'm, again, what we charge for commercial, this is, this is driven towards, this is driven towards homeowners. What about commercial properties?
It applies to commercial properties equally. If there's a mortgage in default, the legislation will buy them.
Right, and we wouldn't charge commercial properties more money?
We're charging everyone equally if there's a mortgage in default.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kathleen O'Leary, Long Beach. I'm going to start my comments with a quote. Many people lost their jobs and their savings, and when they could no longer keep up their mortgage payments to working on jobs, they lost their homes. Okay? You would think that this came out of the housing crisis in New York. It actually is a quote about the Great Depression. The difference between the Great Depression and the housing crisis, and the Little Depression, is that there were programs in place to help homeowners, homeowners, okay? For people that, you know, are in default because they don't have the money to pay the mortgage, paying $500 a year to register is a hardship, you know? That's a lot of money.
It's not on the homeowners, it's just on the banks.
All right, I didn't, I read it differently, then that's okay, okay?
Great.
Okay, so also with the fees, it looks like if you're in some kind of violation, the homeowner can be fined $1,000 to $200, $2,500 and get 15 days in jail.
I believe what you're referring to is the punitive section if they don't register, and the only entities that are required to register are banks when there's a mortgage in default. So it does apply to individuals. In any event, though, a violation in the state of New York can come with a monthly monetary fine and/or 15 days in prison, if that's just standing.
Okay, I'm against putting this on people in default. And the reason I say that, I have several reasons.
This is, this is only on the banks, though. This isn't on people. This is just on the banks. It requires them to pay, be, or register, and it requires them to maintain the property to the extent they need maintenance.
So who's paying, if you're in default, who's going to pay that 500 a year?
The, the bank.
The bank does own a house when you're in default.
So that's the way of this legislation? It makes them pay the fee even though they legally own the house, and it, and it makes them maintain the property as well?
Even though they don't own it, they're going to pay the fees?
Yes.
I find that hard to believe.
Well, Senator Kaminsky, as Ms. Blanchett correctly stated, passed legislation in 2016 that was similar, and this is a sort of an extension of that. This requires them to be responsible for their property even though they don't have legal ownership.
Well, you know, I, also with Allison, I believe you're catching people who are not intended to be caught, which are the people who are in default who are still living in their homes.
But like I said, this isn't a charge on the individual people. This is just a charge on the banks. Individual people legally cannot be charged by, by this legislation.
No?
Yes, it requires banks to register themselves on a registry, and it requires.
Well, what if you don't have a bank? What if you have a real estate developer who bought your property?
Then the real estate developer is responsible.
Okay.
And, and the building code applies to a real estate developer, just like it applies to every person, homeowner in the city.
Okay. You understand also that since the housing crisis, I believe if you missed one or two payments, you're in default. Before the housing crisis, you could go maybe six months without getting in default. Now you missed one payment and you're in default. So I think you're going to have a lot of redundant billing, you know, people, because of the programs that have been set up for people in default, the banks did take some responsibility for the housing crisis, people are able to be in default, live in their homes, maintain them for 11 years or so. So I would hate to see you penalize people like that. They are not living in zombie houses. I totally agree.
People aren't charged, just banks.
Just banks.
This, this is literally only for mortgages that are in default, and only the banks are charged that hold the mortgage notes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Eric Verwood, Slade, Long Beach. This conversation is very timely in regard to looking at residential homes and, and a light, we gave a, but my interest is in the commercial aspect of it. And I, this is on Park Avenue, and as you noticed, the arts and crafts store has been empty for three plus years now. When the landlord owns, you know, he owns the property, he's plenty of property, he's no interest in getting a deal. But that's a blip. And you guys look at this every single day. I don't understand, in the middle of our business district, which is half of the busiest block probably, we don't do anything like that. Whether, and many cities have done this, they have decals of something in the windows to give an appearance that there's business that is life. This is the biggest piece of property here in town, and it's been empty, and it looks like crap, and, you know, we're coming out of our season, but having a business run all the block, it's sort of embarrassing to look at that every day.
I, I believe that business is going to be occupied soon, but with that being said, vacant housing and vacant storefronts is something different and separate and apart from a registry for mortgage.
No, I understand that, but you ought to.
That topic, actually, I believe somebody mentioned that there was a lawsuit against the vendor. That's because our vendor was maintaining a vacant housing registry, and that notion has been being challenged legally throughout the country, including in New Jersey. So New York City is considering doing something like this, and I, I think it's worth it to see how it pans out in vacant municipality.
With regards to commercial property?
In regards to vacant storefronts like that, yes, imposing a tax on vacant storefronts.
Well, I'm not considering tax. I think we've got plenty of taxes here. I'm considering something that makes the town alive, makes that property, forces the building owner to put something in the windows that makes it look like there's activity and not just an empty, voided storefront. For what's going to be in town as you drive around, this is my property, and it's really alive, there's probably very, very few vacant commercial properties. I could be mistaken, but that's my impression. But I asked the arts council, did the arts council reach out to the owner of the establishment, the arts and crafts store?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Anyway, my point is, as you're going through this on residential concept, which makes a lot of logic to have a record of that, consider something in an ordinance that requires, if it's an empty storefront, something that makes it not look empty.
Gotcha, I appreciate that. Anyone else? Mr. Luster?
Mr. Luster, Long Beach. Ms. O'Leary makes a very good point. Do any of you guys know what default means when a house is in default? Greg?
When you don't pay your mortgage.
Do when? Do when? Most mortgages are due when?
Most mortgages are due, I mean, I guess on the first of the month.
You're right, on the first. So when are you in default?
When you don't pay your mortgage.
The second. The next day you're in default.
Most mortgages also carry a grace period.
No, grace period doesn't mean you're not in default. That's a grace period. Now, you say that the bank pays for it? Do you know any bank that doesn't pass the cost on to the homeowner? Any bank? Name one.
We can have a discussion in macroeconomics all night, but I.
I'm not looking for macroeconomics, I'm looking at not hurting people who shouldn't be hurt.
This only affects banks, Mr. Luster.
No, it doesn't. The banks pass it right on to the homeowner. Right on. I'm asking you, do you know one bank, one bank, that doesn't pass it on to the homeowner?
Mr. Luster, I appreciate it. He asked the question, maybe let him answer it.
I asked the question, though.
Let him answer it.
Go ahead, tell me.
I actually would like to respond. I'm going to respond. I think that unfortunately, the costs that are, of our building department and our beach maintenance are also passed on to our residents. The time that each of our departments spends on tracking these down, this short circuits that and allows us to provide a service faster to our residents. I understand what the bank will do with the $500 fee, is what it is. With that said, we would pass that, we have, we have to pay for our building department, we have to pay for our beach maintenance, we have to send them a bill. These, this provides us an opportunity to do it faster.
To make more money. What if somebody is behind, they, they got sick, okay? They had to take an ambulance, it cost them $2,000, they couldn't make this month's mortgage payment. So right away, they're on the registry. Why not make it when a notice of pendency is filed? Why not make it when a foreclosure is starting? Why make it immediately upon a default, a notice of default?
Maybe this will help. There's a definition here of abandoned real property in default. This is in the resolution. It says any real property that is under a current notice of default and/or notice of mortgagee sale pending tax assessors lien sale, and/or properties that have been the subject of a foreclosure sale, where the title was retained by the beneficiary of a mortgage involved in the foreclosure, and any properties transferred under a deed and blue of foreclosure or sale.
Right, it says or, right there, and/or. So if you're in default, if you're in default, you fall under this law. So if you missed a mortgage payment, one mortgage payment, you can keep an immaculate house. And if you miss one mortgage payment, you fall under this, $500 automatically. Is that fair? You would accomplish the same thing by saying when a notice of pendency is filed, when a foreclosure is filed, and you wouldn't be hurting people who might have had a tough month.
Well, I think he's saying you're not hurting anyone because the bank hits the bill.
John, come on, you know that the bank's going to pass it right on to you. Right on, in your next month. The same way if they have to pay your taxes, if they have to pay a fine. There's not a single bank. There's not a single bank, and I ask that question, a single bank that doesn't pass it on. Scott, you know that.
And Roy, you know that if you're citing Ms. O'Leary, which I appreciate her coming up, her recitation of the foreclosure process, as an attorney you are aware, was incorrect. It doesn't automatically go to foreclosure, there are mandatory programs with the court, excuse me, you asked me a question?
Yeah, no, I can answer that question.
Please let me finish.
I'm, I'm certain...
Can I finish, Roy?
Yes.
There are mandatory modification programs, the banks can't just foreclose. This has the definition of what a default is, I understand the respect is free of that. We can agree to disagree with that.
But can you tell me why when it says notice of default, you're saying that's the same thing as foreclosure?
I can tell you, your position is that it hurts the occupant of the home, the person who's on the line. We have a bigger challenge, we have to keep a mind on the community, on the block, on all the people that have to live there, watching this life destroy their property value, watching the health and safety of their children, who have to walk past these unkept houses, rotting food, not be touched, because banks don't care.
Do you think if someone falls behind one month, the house, do you... Do you think if a house falls behind one month because of a sickness or something, that's going to, they're gonna have rotting food and stuff like that? No, people run into tough times, Scott. Scott, I wouldn't mind, nobody's saying if it goes into foreclosure, you can't do that. What you put in here is default, that's entirely different.
With respect, I think you misread, I can both agree and disagree. I believe you misread.
How does, what, what does notice of default mean, Scott? I'm sorry.
Roy, this isn't a lecture from you or a lesson from me, you can read it, I, I invite you to read it again.
I...
That's not the intent of this, and that's not...
I know it's not the intent, that's why I'm asking you, why not make it right?
It's just that, you could extrapolate more, look at that fact, it's not what the legislation says, Roy.
It's exactly what the legislation says, thank you.
Anybody else? No, seeing no hands, next item.
On to the regular calendar. Item 1 is an order to amend the Code of Mordances in the City of Long Beach by emergency ambulance services, a hearing has been held on this item already. Item 2 is an order to amend the Code of Mordances in the City of Long Beach regarding Housing and Property Rehabilitation and Conservation Code, large in default registry, a hearing has been held on this item already. Item 3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a contract for the complete reconstruction of Pacific Boulevard between East Bollman and West Broadway with the most responsible due. I believe we have motion, Mr. Blatche, for a shot.
I have an amendment to the item, in the results section, the last, I guess it's the second to last line where it says account number H3018 dot five two two seven eight sewer upgrade, it currently reads in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars, it should say thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. I'm gonna offer that amendment, and then the numbers all calculate out.
Do I say?
Roy, guess where we bend up?
Yes.
Guess where we bend up?
Yes.
Guess where we go?
Yes.
Because there's a diamond.
Yes.
Now, there you are.
Yes.
What's your guess?
Yes, this is, uh, we have a list of streets, uh, in the Public Works Department that have been raided, in need of repair and categorized from one, two, three, and on. Uh, this is substantially deteriorated, and, you know, very necessary work, uh, and we've got two bids on this, one from Novelli and one from Howland, and Novelli was almost a hundred thousand dollars cheaper.
Any questions from the council?
Just one quick question with respect to the vendor, um, can anyone, maybe Commissioner Moranda can speak to, um, if you have any knowledge about the subcontractors, the members of the, um, women and/or minority business, are vendors used for the subcontracting of this particular proposal?
I don't have any information yet on that, uh, typically with the Novelli brothers, what they'll do for the, uh, WME requirements, they'll use vendors in terms of supplies, supplies for the piping, supplies for the cement that they purchase, and things of that nature. They will, uh, once the contract's awarded to them, they have, uh, they know it's a contract over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and under our ordinance, they must meet the fifteen percent and fifteen percent, and, uh, and that's an effort that they will put forth, and they will supply us all the information.
Thank you.
Do you know when the work will commence, assuming this item passes?
Uh, probably within the next month to six weeks. This was actually a project that we designed in two thousand sixteen, but we held off on doing it, this cover specific avenue from, uh, Broadway to East Chester. Uh, the reason we held off was with the Army project going on with the Groynes, uh, we were concerned about, you know, building a new road with new water mains, new sewers, new drainage, new sidewalks, and then have heavy truck traffic up and down, uh, so we held off, uh, to putting it out to bid this year.
Any other questions from the council, while the commissioner's here?
Um, just, I guess, this is sort of procedural, I, I've been asking for some time for a copy of the capital budget, because we keep voting to spend money from the capital budget, but I, I don't, I'm gonna speak to myself, I don't, the others, I, I don't have a copy of that budget.
Well, each, if, if you notice, the way that the capital bud, this money comes from three separate capital budgets, from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand eighteen, um, we, we, you have to look at each individual budget for the money that was budgeted and approved in a capital budget, but then you have to go into our accounting system, which is Munis, go through each, uh, of the capital projects for each year, and, and in that Munis, it shows you, uh, how much was expended, how much is remaining, how much is encumbered, and that's what I do when I put a project together, I go through Munis and I find out how much is left for each capital account. Unless you have access to Munis, um, it's not something that's, that's, because it's constantly changing, it's not something that's available, but each one of the capital budgets for each one of these years is available on the website.
Well, right, but without the account numbers?
Right, the account numbers are assigned to it in, in Munis.
Right, I understand, I, I guess...
It's part of our accounting system, I, we don't use the accounting system when we prepare the budget, because we don't know what account numbers are gonna be assigned to the various projects that's done each year, uh, after, after the capital budget and the operating budget are approved, those numbers are assigned to those accounts.
I, I understand, I guess the issue I'm dealing with is, I, as a council member, I have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, we all do, you, you include.
True.
Um, and I don't have access to the information to do my job, so I guess I'm trying to understand how do we resolve, I, I don't know if it's...
John, if you would, if you would like to come into my office, sit down with me, I will go through the Munis system, I will show you what's, what information is available in there, and if there's a certain report you would like, I can certainly speak to the Controller's Office and they can print out the information that you would like, the reports can be quite long because they cover everything, and they each break down, for instance, you go into Munis and you go under a capital account for road reconstruction, uh, you go into it, you break it down, it'll show you what's encumbered, you go into what's encumbered, it'll show you the purchase orders that were issued for each contract, for each engineer, in terms, so it's quite detailed, uh, so it's not something that you would have out there, but if you need information on individual accounts, certainly be more than happy to come in, see what we have available, and we could put together a report for you.
So actually, maybe there's a very simple solution here, when we get resolutions like this, with these various account numbers that, because they're in Munis, we don't have access to them, is it possible for you or somebody from the Controller's Office to include in, not part of the resolution, just supplemental information, how much money is available in those accounts?
Absolutely.
That would solve it, that would solve it.
I'd just put the money that we need from the account for a private...
I'm not saying, I'm certainly not saying that the money's there, that you didn't check.
No, I can certainly give you, uh, a printout with it that shows each one of those accounts how much was originally budgeted, how much has been expended already, how much is encumbered, and how much is still available.
Yeah, but that's a report, you could run that with, that would solve it.
Okay, that's not a problem, but that's part of our accounting system, that's why it's not on the, the website.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? The council? Anyone from the public comment on this road reconstruction? Mr. McNally? Name and address for the record?
Good evening, John McNally, six thirteen West Bolman Street, um, I, I assume I already know the answer, but it's something that I like to hammer on, uh, it's safe to say that this is, this project is not designed to comply with the complete streets policy that was adopted by the council in two thousand thirteen. Is, is this part of the complete streets?
This is a complete street project.
Can you just talk to some of the features then?
Sure.
I think you might be talking about different things. You're talking about complete, like, water sewer, right? That's not what he's referring to.
I'm talking about bike lanes, uh, doing crossover safety improvements, stuff along those sides, uh, so you did not, uh, in two thousand thirteen, sorry, digging up a road or rebuilding a street, but all those elements.
Uh, certainly, I mean, we're gonna have new crosswalks there, there'll be new lighting, new sidewalks, new curbing, new water main, new sewer main, I mean, it's a complete roads project, whether Pacific for that area actually calls for a bike lane is, is not necessarily the case, you know?
You have to do it in court.
You have to do it, exactly. This is a residential street with, uh, you know, parking on one side, it's a very narrow street, so it's not a, not a very, uh, wide street, wide street, I should say.
We do open walk acrosswalks, if they need, uh, safety ramps and stuff, and stuff.
All right, so, I mean, I would just point out that since the adoption of that policy, not on the street, has been designed, uh, in accordance with it and well by, you know, respect the need for parking, and that's a end of the street, it's a narrow street, it's got parking on, at least one side, if not both, um, you know, things can be made for considerations, and there's, there's always answers to that, so, um, you know, it's a policy that was adopted with much fanfare, I think it's one that makes a ton of sense in this community, um, and it's one that I'd like to see, uh, us actually start adopting and utilizing, uh, you know, sometime. Thanks, thank you.
Commissioner, just one more? And you don't have to come up, you could just nod. Um, does this include any kind of, like, water catch basins or anything like that, or...
Yes, this includes drainage improvements.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public? Oh, Ms. Blatche?
Ms. Blatche, I might echo what John McNally was just speaking about, um, this is a whole gutting of Pacific, and we have not realized any complete streets in the City of Long Beach since adopting that legislation, that was two thousand thirteen, right? This road, this particular, um, boulevard, is used by a lot of school-aged children to get to school. This is used by a lot of families, um, to get to the beach, and you are prioritizing parked vehicles over human bodies being able to move safely. I would highly recommend that you take a look at what the plans are for putting pavement back down. I would highly recommend that you consider the rights of pedestrians and cyclists to access streets safely and equitably. There is no prioritizing vehicles over the lives of people walking and biking. There, it, it needs to be a complete street for all. I'm gonna recommend that this council take a, a good look at the plans, the, um, any schematics or whatever that, but do you, do you have anything of what the final project will look like?
Absolutely, otherwise we wouldn't be able to put it out to bid.
Okay, has anyone seen it?
Yes, it's been on the design board since, like, before I got here, okay? This is a project that started in two thousand sixteen, and the only reason we held up on it, this is not a wide street, we have other streets like Edwards that were doing bike lanes on it in the middle of the town, so streets are wide.
People, people bike on every street, people walk on every street, people have strollers and wheelchairs on every street, we need to make sure that they're designed to accommodate everyone equally. Um, so, when did this bid go up, by the way? On, it net or whatever, did you guys put that?
This thing came back in August second.
How long was that for?
Uh, about two months.
Two months. And say they're doing another project here, right? Novelli?
They've done several projects for, as well as other projects.
Okay.
They're the one that's...
Okay, well, I really would like you guys to actually consider complete streets, because that's a street that people are using to get to and from school, and it's, you know, lives matter. Light stairs.
Thank you. Anyone else on the road reconstruction of Pacific? Seeing no hands, I call the next item.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement for design engineering services for replacement of a split air conditioning unit for the Long Beach Police and Fire Departments located in the City of Long Beach.
Yes, we currently use a, uh, cooling, uh, machine that we borrow from the Open Nesta County also Emergency Management as a temporary fix, uh, in both the Police and Fire Department, this is a very necessary thing. This summer, before we had it in, in place, the average temperature on the hot days on the desk was over a hundred degrees, uh, it's, it is not only damaging to our, our employees, but it also puts a detriment on our computers and our infrastructure, so this is really a crucial issue to, uh, maintain equality and protect our equipment.
Any questions from the council?
Um, this project is being split up, what the engineering's being done, and I assume afterwards the company can, why is this not being done as a design build? For a commercial HVAC company, we do the whole thing and not require us to have to pay an engineering company upfront and then...
Actually, we originally got the original pricing on this from Carrier, and one of the things they would not do is do the design for it, they, one of the requirements would be for us to get the design engineered, so this is based on it upon a system that Carrier would perform as a replacement, so, uh, this is why we put the RFP out for engineering firms to, uh, to do the design, and it, and it's, it's beyond just designing the system too, there's a lot of old ductwork that has to come out, there may be some asbestos issues, uh, there's also, uh, you know, that new ductwork is gonna have to be designed into this project.
I just, I, I contacted a commercial HVAC company, and they, just to get an idea, and they said it was sort of unusual to do it this way, and said normally that's something they would do as part of the process.
Well, as I say, we contacted Carrier, which has, is part of the state contract on the ban, Carrier came in, reviewed what we needed to do, gave us a proposal when we put this in the capital budget two years ago, and, um, they said, you know, they said that we would have to get the design firm to, to design the system.
So that means we would only use Carrier, that means it's not...
Well, we, we would have them design it as Carrier or approved equal with the specs.
True.
So it wouldn't be limited to just Carrier.
Okay, so an RFP would want then...
A bid would go out, and then the bid specs any equipment that's specked out as Carrier would be specked out as Carrier or approved equal. We wouldn't, uh, but, you know, make anybody have to use certain amount of, certain equipment as long as it was equal to the Carrier equipment, could be Rheem, it could be, you know, there's other manufacturers out there.
Okay, thank you.
What's the, Commissioner, just, what's the timeline for finishing this?
Well, the engineering should take about six weeks, and then it'll go out to bid for two months, and it's probably a four-month project.
Okay, thank you.
So before next summer?
Before next summer, the cops have guns.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Dooley C. for the Police and Fire, Mr. Gusly? Split, not do.
Good evening, again, Jay Gusle, Long Beach. I don't think anybody questioned the necessity for functioning air conditioning in Police and Fire Headquarters, uh, in particular Fire Headquarters, if people live in there twenty-four hours a day, um, and we're all aware of the, uh, difficult conditions that those people had to endure when there was nowhere to be air conditioning, but, um, I also why, wanna know, why Carrier, I mean, there's a million different manufacturers out there, um, also, why new ductwork? There's, best to my knowledge, nothing wrong with the ductwork, the ductwork is just a, a set of, uh, you know, conduits through which air passes, you know, I'm at a loss as to why that would need to be re-engineered, the ductwork that's in there is, I don't know, it's fine, I, I'm really mystified by that. Do we know the square footage of the combined area of the system is designed to... of the combined area of the system is designed to handle or cover?
First of all, we're switching from a system that's actually internal to building itself in a room to a split unit on the rooftop that's gonna both take...
Casey, Miss Dan, we're switching from an internal unit that's in a room within the police department. We're switching to a split unit that's gonna go on the roof. So there's some structural engineering that needs to be done to support that. Then the ductwork will have to be changed because it'll be a different type of system than we have now. So, you know, this is gonna be an extensive project, so we wanna have it done right. We've got some, we've got some really great proposals from the engineers. They really understood what they were doing. We had seven proposals, and I think we should move along and get this finished before next summer. This will be, this will be one of the things the engineering firm is gonna do. They'll calculate the square footage, they'll calculate the heating requirements, they'll calculate the air conditioning requirements that'll be needed to satisfactorily, you know, heat and cool the areas.
I don't wanna question an engineer's understanding of the system, but I can tell you from personal experience and personal knowledge that we already have a split system in, and there are air handlers that are inside the building, but the condenser, the thing that actually creates the cold that is inserted into the air handlers for cooling the air, that's on the roof. It's on roof now. So I don't know what needs to be re-engineered about any of the budget. Maybe Ms. Miranda knows something about this, but I don't know. The other thing is, we spent about $45,000 on a temporary unit that's, I believe, still sitting out there chugging away. So between that expense and this engineering expense, we'll be at $105,000 before we've put a single stitch of actual work into repairing the system. Do we have any kind of an idea what the system's gonna run us? I'm thinking not a hundred grand. Thinking you can put this out to bid fairly easy and get this system replaced for less than what you've spent already on engineering temporary stopgap measures.
Anybody else on the split air conditioning for Police and Fire? No? Seeing no hands, next item.
I endorse a resolution authorizing planning to be remitted to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for betterments associated with the beach building, dune crossing structures project, and to amend the budget.
Yes, at four of the crossovers, Neptune Riverside, National, and New York Avenue, there will be extra wide crossovers. They'll be 30 feet wide, and the council, when looking at the different designs, didn't want to use number two pine connected to the eppingwood. So what they decided is because these are such large expanses that it would really blend much better if we continued the eppingwood for the crossovers and then just used the number two pine for the stairs and ramps. So this amount is for the purpose of the eppingwood.
No, this is no railings, if I can.
I'm sorry?
This isn't, doesn't include railings, does it?
This does not include the railings. There's a separate item that's still being discussed with you on the floor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any questions for the public on the 30-foot wide walkovers to go over on new dunes? No? Seeing no hands, next item.
Item six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of ordnance authorizing financing for various capital projects in and for the city, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $8,264,616. Permitting said amount therefore, including the expenditure of $4,292,116, expected to be received in the state or federal aid or special assessment revenues, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $8,264,616 bonds of said city to finance said appropriation, and further authorizing any amounts received from the United States of America and/or State of New York and/or special assessment revenues to be expended towards the cost of certain of such capital projects as indicated herein, or redemption of any notes and bonds issued therefore or to be budgeted as an offset to the taxes for payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds and bonds. This item is a publication only. Hearing will be done Thursday, September 20th at 7:00 p.m. On to the voting. Item one is an ordinance to amend the code ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding emergency ambulance services.
Do you approve the adoption of this item?
So my big concern with this issue was the fact that I didn't want somebody that needed an ambulance to be concerned that could they afford the ambulance and maybe hesitate to call it. But I think it's been made clear that bills do not go to individuals, they go to the insurance companies and/or Medicaid or Medicare. So that satisfies that concern. I absolutely doubt a vote yes.
I agree with Councilman Vendo just said, and one of the reasons why I was against tableing this or ending it, tying the city's hands in how it goes about collecting and negotiating with insurance companies, especially on a fly-eared resolution, I think is ill-advised. I think this has to stand the way it is, and again, as Councilman Vendo pointed out, this is not an issue of willing patience. This is an issue of negotiating with insurance companies. I do like the option of looking out to work with charitable organizations as Miss McGinnis brought up, to see about hardship cases, but that's different than this, and I think we should explore that. Would that should result in delaying this resolution, I would, yes.
I'd still like to see an annual report so that we can begin to assess our service that we render. In addition, some kind of report that speaks to the monies that are collected. I think the issue here, and this has continued to be an issue for the past three years, is that we have not engaged in assessment. Assessment is important. The purpose of assessment is not only to find fault in different aspects of what we do, but to also highlight some of the achievements that we've made. So when I ask for assessment, I'm asking not because I'm trying to put anyone on record, but that we can look at all of the work that we have done. It's clear here that there are some other issues that still need to be looked at. It's unfortunate that we did not table so we could have further discussion, but based on the comments that have been made in good faith, I'm hoping that we can continue to move forward with some kind of positive aspect with respect to the community, with respect to charity, as was pointed out by Councilman Vendo, as well as Councilman Mandel. But I'm also hoping that we can move forward as a council in engaging in that conversation before we come here to the table, so that we don't have to go through the process today and ask so many questions, and we allow for those questions to be asked by the members of the outside. That being said, I will vote yes. However, again, it's a reservation.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Item two is an ordinance to amend the code ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding housing and property rehabilitation and conservation code, mortgage in default register.
Do you approve the adoption of this item?
Okay, just wanted to be clear. This is not about kicking grandma out of her house. This is not about sending bills to anyone. This is paid by the banks, and what we're doing is we're establishing a line of accountability so we know who we can go to for properties in default that are not being maintained. We don't have that ability right now. This is gonna give us that. So with that, I vote yes.
Again, there are defenses in there, even just to answer some questions. Even squatters have rights. They just can't be thrown out. That's why this is not impacting on that. This is a step further to bring you forward. Senator Kaminsky has put forward at the state level, and it's empowering our city to take up the mantle and remove things to protect the residents, to protect the community. Not voting for this, I think would be irresponsible. And as anyone who lives on one of those blocks, who actually has to be subjected to one of these zombie homes, and I think they would agree, I'd vote yes.
All right, so during our budget sessions, this was actually one of the conversations that we had, which means that I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with some of the proposed budget initiatives. I also feel that it's important for us to, at this time, focus on improving the quality of life within our communities. I think it's important that at this point, we're moving forward in terms of addressing the blind issue, and that we clearly need to hold banks responsible and accountable. With that, I vote yes.
First, I want to thank the acting city manager for moving so quickly on this item. As Councilwoman Moore said, this was one of the revenue sources that we discussed as part of the budget process, but since I've been on the council, we've addressed a number of these issues, and I've watched some of the barriers that our departments are faced with and the time that it takes, not only for our department, but that our resident has to wait for a house that's close by to them to be addressed. I understand that the mortgage and the foreclosure process is extremely long in certain cases, and this just gives the city the tools that it needs to take, to take the necessary steps in order to protect our residents. So with that, I vote yes.
Yeah, to make the banks accountable for the quality of life of our residents is, to me, a no-brainer. I vote yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to a contract for the complete reconstruction of Pacific Boulevard between East Walnut and East Broadway with the longest responsible bidder.
Do you approve the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
I will.
Okay, voting, Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aron?
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement for design engineering services for the replacement of a split air conditioning unit for the Long Beach Police and Fire Departments located in City Hall.
Do you approve the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aron?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing funding to be remitted to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for betterments associated with the beach building, dune crossing structures project, and to amend the budget.
Do you approve the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aron?
Yes.
And finally, item six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of ordnance authorizing financing for various capital projects in and for the city, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $8,264,616, appropriated said amount therefore, and including the expenditure of $4,292,116, expected to be received in state or federal aid or special assessment revenues, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $8,264,616 bonds of said city to finance said appropriation, and further authorizing any amounts received from the United States of America and/or the State of New York and/or special assessment revenues to be expended towards the cost of, the cost of certain of such capital projects as indicated herein, or redemption of any notes and bonds issued therefore or to be budgeted as an offset to the taxes for payments of the principal and, oh, I'm sorry, of and interest on said notes and bonds.
I will.
Okay, voting, Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
Yes.
City manager's monthly personnel report has been filed by the city clerk for making motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Vendo?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Diamond?
Yes.
President Aron?
Yes.
Okay, we enter our good and well fair section of the meeting. As everyone knows, you get three minutes of uninterrupted time. I would ask to be respectful and maintain composure. Mr. Patrick Arceus.
I'd like to thank you for looking out for the passengers, the tactagers, the homeowners of the city. It's the right thing to do. Way overdue, way overdue. All right, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. My cousins do the repave of the streets. They own the company. My uncle owned the company. Now the brother's own the company. All right, you're not aware of it. But they brought it to my attention. They said, geez, we come over, we go over the Barazanah Bridge. You pay $15 for your car. We pay $250 for their dump trucks. Any oversized vehicles are destroying your cities, they told me. Domino's, Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks. I'm not giving them a pitch, but all these franchises, concrete trucks. Now, Commissioner, the city manager, those plate readers, if they're accurate, he says, there's cities we're blessed to be going to. They scan the plate, they send us a bill. We're using their roads, overloaded trucks. They built, give them a bill. They sent, they sent them a bill, and there's gonna be a lot of concrete trucks, dump trucks, everything. When they do the super block and other buildings, you got a lot of, lot of things going on here. And they take that into consideration when they bid to repave roads here. In other words, that's, that's in the bid. In other words, in case they get a tax. He said, they don't even come over many beach bridges because their trucks won't go under the overpass. And plus, their fees, they gotta pay for going over that bridge. They take Long Beach Road. Can't get on the Meadow Brook Parkway. When you go down the Florida Line 85, there's weight stations. They get taxed every state they go through by their weight of their vehicle. They destroy the roads of this city, not the cars. And it's way overdue that to, now we're up to date with those scanners. They scan it, and they can send the bill to that company, the city. They should take it into consideration, knock it around, and see how it works out. Thank you ever so much, Commissioner and everybody. Aron?
Thank you. Time to get to the restroom. John McMillan.
Who wants to follow me? John McMillan, 613 West Walnut Street. I would just, I'm back on beating a dead horse on the process. You guys had two public hearings tonight where I think everyone would agree there was valid questions brought up that left you guys in a position where, while you had confidence in what you were voting for, you know, I'm sure there was some knowing or some other things that you would like to do some further investigation. I don't see that either of these public hearings were things that were so timely in an emergency way that they needed to be voted on tonight. So again, I order the council to wherever and whenever possible, decouple public hearings from the vote. If you guys are gonna hold a public hearing tonight, do the vote in two weeks. Otherwise, I think a lot of the residents feel like, you know, our information that we're trying to provide you with falls on deaf ear, and it's not giving you guys the proper opportunity to do your research and answer the questions of the residents or answer the questions that you yourselves might have. I don't think it's a huge ask, but I keep asking it, and, you know, here we are. That's all I got. Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. James Hodge.
Good evening. Good evening. James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street, Long Beach, New York. Just wanna thank the auxiliaries for the fine job they do. I didn't plan on speaking today. I just planned on coming to the city council meeting. Haven't been in a while, but as I entered the door, I was greeted by two police officers that said that they were waiting for me to give me a summons, and found it very strange. And then one of the police officers proceeded to say, I will be, it will be a warrant for my arrest, and some of the people here heard him say it. And then the young lady that was there, she then said that I'm an embarrassment, and I should be ashamed of my support. I think I've been in Long Beach 41 years of my life, and I've given just about everything I can till where I don't really have nothing myself in trying to rebuild my house. The words that she used, even though I'm a man, was very hurt and disturbing because she knows clearly nothing about me. And the officer that was telling me, well, she told me there'll be a warrant for my arrest if I don't take a summons. And I guess it must be a summons because I called the And I guess it must be a summons because I called the police yesterday because I always would defend the community and try to help out and assist if I hear something. So I called the police to call me yesterday because there was a gun sighting and I had a little young lady run in my office yesterday and get under the desk and start screaming and crying. There's several different people and one of the young ladies had to go and talk to the little girl. And I ran downstairs, ran outside, down the street, almost next to McDonald's. There were some guys and some activity. I don't know exactly what was going on, but what I wanted to do immediately is, because I can't defend against a gun, I wanted to call the police and try to get them there as soon as possible. I called the police and said, there's a lot of people here at Robbie Day. There's something going on right down the street. Can you please send some cars? And I don't care necessarily if you say that I called, right? But I do know that in this day and time, when you just say, well, listen, you called the police and this and that, people are around, can get mad because you called the police and they feel like you're telling on them and snitches and all that. I never cared. I have a nephew that was killed, I have nephews that were shot. So I always call. I don't play with guns and did three gun buybacks with the church and Marcus Tinker. So I got back in front of the MLK Center and two of the people there, one of the officers was talking to me and I told him, I don't exactly know what was going on, but can you get some cars down here? I think it's a little tension. I don't want any of the children to get hurt. And he said, well, give me more details. I said, I don't know details, but I do know it was a possible gun and it's kinda short, you know? And I called, when I called, and so the other police officers walked over and two of the guys walked over and said, well, that police officer, I'm sorry, one over time. I'll try that today. The police officer just said, open the effin' street. You don't have a effin' for me. And then the officer proceeded to tell me with several different guys around, not knowing exactly who they were, give me more detail. I said, I'm not exactly sure. And he started, you know, telling me, the officer, you called. And then the guys around me, not knowing that they probably could have been in gangs or whatever, you know, you called, you said that there was a gun, so tell me what's going on. And I said, why would you? I said, even though I don't care in front of these guys, because I don't care about the safety of the children, why would you yell and tell this? Because the guy said, who called? He said, James, you called. So I just think that in training, that was wrong for him to do.
I think your time is up, Mr. Hodge.
And then to give me a ticket today, when I'm just saying.
But I think the police commissioner can speak to. If you see a gun, I'm pretty sure you're supposed to call the police. So I don't know that that's why you got a summons and that maybe.
No, 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 let me finish.
Your time is up.
I know that, but don't be trying to diss me, okay? No saying that you're pretty sure. I know that if you say guns are true, but I'm saying, let's, let me just say this. I'm not over Robbie Day. I am the president of the organization. I'm not the executive director. I did not instruct the street to be blocked. I am not over the Robert D. Gors Foundation. I'm in, so why would James Hodge get a ticket and say that I threw a block party? I never, I never instructed the street to be blocked. The city helped sponsor the event. The city helped do events. The city did a flyer themselves to put it on their website. The city came down, all the council members, the city met with the foundation. So why instruct police officers next day to give me a meeting?
Your time is up, please.
Okay, so can you just let me know why James Hodge?
Mr. Hodge, I think it's, I understand your concerns and we can discuss them at a later time, but it's really not appropriate for the city council to comment on pending legal matters which you seemed to reference just now. However, I'm happy to address your concerns at a later one time.
He just gave his administrative, police commissioner a chance to. Because I'm just understanding, why did I come to a council meeting?
If you see a gun, you should call the cops, that's all I'm asking.
I have to advise the police commissioner.
Okay, well, I'm saying to, is any council member wanna, I just came to a meeting. If we wanna go here, listen, so on a legal matter, I will tell you this. I'm telling you, if you wanna start harassing me, it's the wrong thing to do. I promise you, I've been here before and I would call Fred Bruin. Then tonight, if I come to a council meeting, I'm getting a ticket for nothing, for calling because I feel the children are in danger and nobody has an answer? And obviously, they went back to talk to someone, so someone instructed them to give me a ticket tonight. It's wrong and I'm just saying it. So if I'm gonna start being harassed, then I got you. I hear you. I hear you, okay? I ate it before, I'll eat it now. God is on my side and the community knows nothing would happen yet, okay? Thank you.
Mrs. Janice Gals.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I hope Robbie Day was really successful.
It really was.
Good.
I thank everyone that actually donated and showed up. Of course, we have, they're kind of a little tough. My name is Janice Gals of fifteen East Hudson Street, Long Beach, New York. I'm here because I walked in here because there was a bit of a commotion on about a permit. I sent all paperwork in in July and then again in August. So if there was a discrepancy of us not having the documents that we needed, someone should have reached out. My number was on there, the MLK number was on there, and also Lisa Page, which was the acting ED. We did not get contacted. The police drove down the block several times, came and said hello and kept going throughout the day. And they did not say anything about the streets being, didn't have our permit until the police was caught because there was shooting. And my daughter happened to be one of the kids that ran upstairs crying hysterically. So imagine how I felt as a parent giving back to the community. And the police said, oh, we only need to send one car with no lights. So you tell me how you feel as a parent, okay? I'm a little emotional because that's my daughter. Because nobody's ever told me anything if something were to happen to my daughter. You couldn't stand up here and say, oh, I'm sorry, or let me talk to you. That wouldn't be acceptable. So in our community, all we have left is Bobby Day. And for the police not to show up like they should have to protect our youth that they're giving back to the community, we don't care about color. We don't know color. We know our community, which is Long Beach. We've been doing this for thirteen years. We've never had an issue of getting a permit, blocking the streets off, having council people have the police come. We've never had an issue to twenty eighteen. I am not here because of any politics. I don't do them. I do the community. I fight for the community. I'm the only one, I don't do photo ops. I'm behind the scenes, but when it comes down to our youth, I will fight teeth and nails for them. Defamation of character when we walked in the building and the police tell me, we're here to give James a ticket. I'm like, well, what's that about? Okay. Then the cop, I pulled the cop over to the side and said, you can't give him anything because he's not a part of the Robert D. Gors Foundation. I am. If there's a ticket that shouldn't be here, give it to me because I gave the order to block the streets because I was under their pressure. We have a permit. Then he goes and tells me, oh, well, I know all about Robbie Day. I didn't wanna write this ticket, but I had to. I said, what do you mean? He said, we had to give James Hodge a warning. So now again, is this politics or is this race? You guys decide because I see no color. I see white and warm. And this is the police that's supposed to protect us. This is the same officer that came out that did not put a light on to protect our kids. Maybe it's not your kids that's over there, but mine are. So please help me understand where y'all protecting us. And, Mr. Caddy, I appreciate what you're doing, but we need you back over the police because evidently, they're not following rules and they're doing whatever they choose. But when it comes down to my daughter, we're gonna get answers. Y'all decide, now y'all gonna give it to me, but we need to get them tonight. That's all I got to say. You ain't got to tell me my time is up.
We just heard about some sort of incident this evening right before the council meeting and I can assure you that the entire council will find out, at least be briefed by the police department as to what happened. But this is all new information to us, but we did hear that there was some sort of incident with a permit and that was the extent of what we knew.
Well, Mr. Caddy, I have my email, so I'll give you the email.
We will, I guarantee you that the council will find out what exactly happened and you'll wanna clear it up to make sure Robbie Day is successful and make sure the community feels safe. Mr. Jay Gussler.
Good evening again, Jay Gussler, Long Beach. Any update on the city manager search? I'm sure I'll need to point out to you guys that it is September. That is the ninth month of the year that we still don't have permanent city manager. Now, a couple things come to mind. One is, you know, look, one guy's been doing both the police commissioner and city manager job for the last nine months. So one or both of those jobs are basically unnecessary because if one guy's doing it, how tough could it be? And if it's not tough, why are we having such a difficult time filming? I understand you guys took in like fifty resumes, some of whom were highly qualified people. Please explain to the taxpayers, please explain to the residents, the people who have to live with the management of this city or mismanagement of this city, how it is that we don't have a professional manager in place nine months after the vacancy? It is unconscionable. You guys really need to get your shit together and get a permanent manager. This is ridiculous.
Mr. Roy Lester.
Roy Lester, Long Beach. Just three quick questions. Michael, you said the boardwalk, the Epi's going to be connected to Epi?
Just for the thirty-foot crosswalks.
Right, but is the current wood Epi?
Yes.
Okay, because when it was built, we were told that the Epi wasn't available and we used another hardwood.
It's Epi wood.
It is.
And the reason for this is the thirty-foot wide crosswalks.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, they're being treated sort of as an extension of the boardwalks.
Yeah, I just see a lot coming up. You know, people are tripping on it now and I, you know, and I didn't think that would happen with Epi. And I was told when it was built that Epi wasn't available, they used another hardwood. But you're telling me now that that was wrong? Okay.
That's my understanding totally.
No, no, that's, you know for sure, right?
Positive, hundred percent positive.
Okay. Our second question is the signage in the, I guess I'll call it zombie bill. What signage is that? What are they talking about that maintain the signage?
I believe it's signs that the building department posts, notices and things of that sort.
But does it mention it anywhere?
It mentions it in the building code.
But not in this section?
It incorporates the building code by reference.
Okay. And the third question is, a week ago Sunday, beautiful day, boardwalk was closed to runners, to bikers, to walkers until nine twenty in the morning. And that was, I guess, the flea market that was put up there. What do we make on that? Does anyone know?
Those ones go there until they start with society.
They go?
They go to the historical society, that's their affair.
Oh, so all that money, the city doesn't make anything on that? But the city determined?
Well, there is a permit, but that's one of the things when we have the events with the legislation to address.
So do we know what we make, what the city makes on it?
None.
Did, what does that mean, Michael? No, no. A thousand dollars?
I think less.
Less than a thousand dollars? And, but the city decides to close it?
It's a safety issue. The police department decides to close it.
Okay, and why is it a safety issue for walkers?
Because we're driving cars up on the boardwalk.
Cars on the boardwalk?
Yeah, absolutely, my God.
Isn't, how does that affect the boardwalk?
It doesn't. We used to drive the number two pine and this was much smaller.
Yeah, no, and the number two pine completely fell apart because of the trucks and stuff. And the city doesn't.
The pine fell apart because of the elements.
Yeah, the city doesn't bring trucks up. I, you know, they used to bring trucks up and now they bring the little quads up, which is great, I applaud you guys for that, you know? But the reason you did that was because you said that the trucks destroyed the boardwalk, but the vendors are allowed to bring the trucks up there.
I never said that and nor do I believe it.
You don't believe that the trucks destroyed the boardwalk?
The old boardwalk, yes, not the new.
Yeah, but what's causing it to raise now?
How do they go big up to the world?
Do you jump? There are several boards that do raise after time. The Epi was put in with a finishing type screw and sometimes over time, some of the Epi will pop out a little bit and I mean screws, but there's nowhere they're gonna make this thing to go on with the other line.
Oh, not at all, but John, you're saying that the trucks don't affect it at all?
That boardwalk is designed to H-ten loading, which is a truck loading of twenty thousand pounds, so. I think what's hard is the variable impact.
And what?
I think what's hard is the variable impact.
Yeah, I don't know. People are running. Okay, they just, so the city decided it's a safety issue?
The police did.
Okay, police.
And when we're setting up and taking down, we close the road proceed.
Okay, and how come it can't be set up earlier? Nine thirty in the morning on, I mean, nine twenty in the morning on a Sunday is kinda late?
They start at six. It's just how long the process takes.
Okay.
All right, next. Ms. Allison Blanchett.
Allison Blanchett, I'm speaking on behalf of Long Island Streets and as a co-organizer of Families for Safe Streets, Long Island. County Executive Laura Curran recently asked for comments on school zone speed cameras following the recent executive order signed by Governor Cuomo after the New York City school zone speed camera legislation that was shamefully installed in the Senate by Republican Senators Marty Golub and Plenigan. Well, as you all know, they now, the city council, New York City Council was able to get them passed with the help of Governor Cuomo. So Laura Curran has asked for comments on the return of the Nassau County school zone cameras. Nassau County School Zone Opt-In Speed Camera Program is an important safety grab to curb speeding in school zones. This is not only about preventing children, caregivers, and school workers from being maimed or killed, but curbing speed so all people will feel safer walking and biking, not to mention humanizing our streets by creating behavioral change from our suburban speed car culture, both in and outside of school zones. It is imperative that an opt-in program happen now. I'm asking the council to support this. Please contact Nassau County Executive Laura Curran and please show support for this opt-in program. And I'm curious, has anyone had a discussion about this on the city council level? Do you guys know what I'm talking about? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brian Moore.
Good evening, Al Martin. I'm here because on Saturday, September first, I took the initiative to, with a few other people from the unit block of East Pond Street, to host our very first block party. And the day was a huge success. Everyone enjoyed it, everyone had a great time. Until later on that evening, about ten oh five P.M., the block party was ruined by a group of fifteen people who went out from Long Beach and our block party got ruined because it started fighting and acting wild. The police were called because I called them. And the residents on the block are having a, they're a little nervous because next year, we would like to have another block party because we have a lot of graduates that are gonna be graduating this year from high school on our block. This year, the other hundred block of East Pond Street, they were canceled. The block party was canceled due to fighting or Nassau happening to be called in or whatever. But we don't want that on my side because it had nothing to do with us and we feel like we shouldn't have to pay for others' responsibility, especially the people that live on the block. And everyone was having a great time. Some said that I shouldn't come and I shouldn't say anything, but I'm not going to sit and let other people ruin what these good people in the North Park area have come together and worked very hard to do. So I wanted to put that on record that I came and I did get it streamed because next year, when we do decide to put in the necessary paperwork down at the police department, I don't want any problems and I don't want any of the kids that live in my neighborhood to have to suffer from kids that are being ignorant or whatever. I just feel like we can do something and we have to work on our policing in our community so it can get better. our community, uh, so it can get better, uh, because I feel also when we're having block parties that we have such a large police department to where, uh, throughout the day two officers can just walk down the block just to make sure everything's okay, not to do any, uh, crazy things, but just to make sure that the, the people are seeing the police and not only when crimes are happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Now, McKinnis.
Karen McKinnis, one oh two Pennsylvania Avenue. I just have a few questions. I noticed that in the last bond issue document from just a few months ago, which is available online, unaudited financials from fiscal year end June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen were used. Isn't the bond market like a little annoyed about this? And are they going to take punitive measures against us the next time we have a bond issue? Unless the audited financials from June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen are now available? Period.
It's, it's hard to predict what the market, how the market for bonds is going to react in a given bond issue. Is it pure speculation? You know, obviously it's preferable to have audited statements.
Right, and it said that in the last bond issue document, it said that the city was taking every measure it could to make sure that financials would be submitted on time, correct?
I, I, I can't recall, I haven't looked at that bond document in a long time.
All right, I can send it to you, but it says that. Okay. Are there any circumstances separate from the vacation and drawdown payouts, which have already, are under discussion, in which exempt employees receive pay in addition to their regular salary? And if so, what are they?
So are you asking?
I'm saying that an exempt employee such as yourself, just for illustrative purposes, you get paid a regular salary, your salary is the same every single week. Are there any circumstances in which any exempt employee, for example, any exempt employee in this room, is receiving pay as income besides their regular salary?
Pay as income? No, not that I know of.
Are you sure?
Not that I know of.
Can someone research that, please?
I, I mean, there is, the salaries are the salaries, the only other type of payment I would think would be income would be like expense reimbursements under certain circumstances?
Correct.
Reimbursement, that's not income.
So, did you want to say unequivocally that exempt employees only receive salary, or do you want to get back to me?
I don't, I don't know what you're defining as salary, like?
Salary is your salary. If you make five thousand dollars a month, no matter how many hours you work, as an exempt employee, you still make five thousand dollars.
What time period are you referring to?
Now.
Right now? I don't know of any exempt employee that's getting any type of payout outside of a regular salary.
So you are confirming that from now, from this point forward, no one is making extra pay?
To the best of my knowledge, everybody is simply getting their salary, just like?
Can you confirm that, like unequivocally, please?
I would need to review our payroll records, you know, in a certain time period to be able to confirm it, but I can, I can tell you almost certainly that exempt employees right now are getting their salaries and that's it. There might be expense reimbursements, but I don't think that's income. Other than that, I don't, I don't really know of anything else.
Okay, well, you may not remember President Reagan too well, but he always said trust but verify, so I would ask if you could do that for me, please?
Aren't, aren't stipends used occasionally?
I believe Commissioner Taggney, uh, in his latest budget, ended that practice. Uh, for example, according to my salary was paid out as stipend, it no longer is, it's a transparent number. I think Commissioner Taggney was trying to make it as transparent as possible. However, to my knowledge right now, and can or correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Taggney, I'm not sure that any exempt employee gets a stipend.
Uh, I don't, I can't take it wrong.
Okay. Are there any circumstances under which City of Long Beach employees can discuss local political party matters with other staffers or outside political consultants during business hours at City Hall?
No.
The next question. When I go to the archive video, audio of city council meetings, only three of the last meetings are available. Then it says you can see all of our available videos on our YouTube channel by clicking here. When I do that, I can't find any city council meetings prior to July thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Is that something that can be fixed?
No.
We lost?
Yeah, we, our builders provide a changeless mobile app.
Uh-huh. You can usually pay a fee to get that. Can the city manager's office look into that? Thank you.
The Committee Officers Association has the law.
No, going forward.
No, not going back. They have.
But, but as a city, we still have to.
No, I understand, I'm just saying. Was it video and audio or just videos at most?
No, just, just the video, the audio we still have, but the, the video we don't.
Okay, my last, my last, uh, question, which is more of a question or suggestion. I went to the city website today and went to the page that says Open Government Transparency Portal. And I'm going to quote it. It says, "Since taking office in two thousand twelve, this administration has shown its commitment to transparency, openness, accountability, and accountability. We have to achieve this by enhancing our budget document, posting essential financial documents on the city's website, live streaming city council meetings, launching the Long Beach Response Mobile App, and implementing Long Beach Listens, which is the funds, and the Long Beach DAP programs. In an effort to enhance our commitment to transparency, we are pleased to present our Open Government Portal. The City of Long Beach has partnered with Open Gov to provide a new web-based transparency and intelligence tool, intelligence tool, that presumably presents the city's budget data through interactive charts and graphs. We truly hope you will find this tool useful and will look forward to creating a new standard of transparency in Nassau County."
That's, that's your time, Ms. McKinnis.
Uh, my quote is, "Our budget is the policy tool and framework through which we allocate the resources to power our smart recovery," said city manager Jack Shearman. "It contains the city's strategic goals, priorities, and accomplishments, and it lays the foundation from which to build upon them months and years to come. The last time this site on the city website was updated was June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Monica Goodman.
Monica Goodman, West Broadway, Long Beach. So, I have a suggestion. I was watching the news and saw that some seaside communities, I'm not sure if they are in New York as well, but I think the one I was seeing was Jersey, where they banned balloons. And I would urge you to make some legislation, no, not balloons when the kids go in a store. I'm talking about the release of balloons outside, which don't, uh, they're not biodegradable and they're causing harm to sea life. And I really strongly urge you to do that. I, I think it would go a long way. Because we really need to protect the shoreline and the ocean. And, uh, not to beat a dead horse, but I'm pretty sure there was a program instituted a few years back about, uh, store owners having to pay a fee, and then the city would power and launch the sidewalk in front. And I'm hoping that you can look into that because, again, the sidewalks smell, the streets smell. It's, uh, it's pretty bad. And last but not least, I just want to make a comment about the, uh, City of Long Beach publication that was just recently mailed, I believe it was about, uh, preparedness. So please take this as I mean it. I don't understand why the city council members and the police commissioner, but we might be able to make an exception for him, have City of Long Beach jackets, shirts, you know, are you guys paying for these? Because I have to say, it irritates me that you spend our money on frivolous things like this. And complain that you're short money and so the air conditioner didn't work a few weeks back or whatever. You know, you have to stop the ridiculous spending. And to me, those jackets and shirts are frivolous and ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Cannon.
Again, thank you very much for your time and that energy you guys spent up here all time. Um, I'm up here to just find out on the comprehensive plan. Um, I'm glad to see, hopefully, we, hopefully table it until we get a manager. That'd be great, if that's the concept here, I have a bad one here, which about it for now. Um, in general, though, uh, we had meetings all for three years going on, you know, these things I'm sure you're very familiar with, and we all had. And, um, in those, we discussed a potential plan that eventually would be, all the input the towns would put it into. That was all hypotheticals, a lot of it was property that the city didn't own, never deciding what to do with. There's a lot of confusion over a lot of the things were going on at the time because it was hypothetical. Now that a one has been done that's supposedly going to get close to or adoption after the manager hopefully gets found and, and put on, um, has there been an idea of having meetings to review the actual plan now? Because now people can discuss not a hypothetical, but what's being supposedly going to be adopted. So we held meetings that were actually very helpful to go over people, even if it's just, I mean, if you did the minimum of having meetings with the people who are on the committee advisor, sorry, community advisor committee, that, you know, it's in the page, you know, seven or two of the plan, you can see the people that are on this list that supposedly, you know, would help the community understand this, but they haven't met in years. So it seems pretty odd that we've all abandoned the research of making sure the town has trust in what you're thinking of doing, when it's so easy just to have times where people that want to be involved, you know, a lot of people here that would love to be involved in talking about it and making sure that the resiliency fans, which sounds very good, that's why resiliency is a great idea, but then a lot of ideas by taking out any hype statements, so therefore we're really vague on what type of hype requirements we're going to have in the future. It would be wonderful if it just said, hey, let's keep the existing hype requirements until the future, that decision of somebody, but not just leave it open, because that's the scary part. I think everyone knows here, they talk to residents, the scary part is the hype part. So there's some things we really need to gain trust in, in this plan, and there's some things we should really be supporting in the plan. But why we've given up the idea of discussing what's now final in general, says silly. Is there any reason why you think we've abandoned the concept of doing public meetings or at least meetings with people of concern?
Well, there was like twenty-five meetings. The next stage is the zoning boardwalk, so it's got to be voted on and passed, and then the real meetings and the real debates occur during the zoning boardwalk.
The comprehensive plan is supposed to be, uh, guideline in addition, and I think the discussion that you were talking about and that President Obama was referencing is the actual zoning overhaul. That's where all the fine details have to come out, and we have to have meetings and discuss it and have a ton of public outreach. But, but before that happens, the plan has to pass, there has to be a plan, otherwise we don't get to the zoning issue. Because zoning must be rationally related to a comprehensive plan, lest it be, you know, the court strike it down.
Those are great points, okay, you're making. I'm still talking about the idea of this thing before it's adopted, having, again, these people really never got together in years to discuss this. Okay, I'm on this list, okay? So the concept of not letting us get together more often, discuss it while waiting for a manager, seems to me like a lost opportunity. I'm done talking, but I'd love answers.
I have an answer for you.
So does it not seem like a lost opportunity?
I think the lost opportunity was not passing in the Congress.
If it were passing something there's no trust in the community, that seems to be silly. Let's, we can get trust in if we try, instead of just saying we're going to pass it.
We had twenty-five meetings.
But no, the meetings weren't on a finalized plan. There's twenty-five meetings of hypotheticals.
There is no final.
Meetings, no, this is now final. Every time we're talking about it, they were saying, oh, well, we're talking about build of property, I'd say, the foundation block that we don't own. Why is that even in the plan?
That's how comprehensive plans are operated. That's.
They're supposed to be broad and even possibility when it comes to overall zoning.
Okay, then, I know many people in the community that don't trust this plan yet, and I'd love to have an adopted plan that people trust. Thank you.
Mr. Delory.
I have a couple of names on the bottom. I'd like to discuss in two weeks what the bonding will encompass. Um, I'll keep it short. All I'm doing is asking for a discussion. Items that are in, uh, the capital improvement budget, which some of you have highlighted copies there. Um, and EAF and EIS for the comprehensive plan, a hundred and fifty thousand. Zoning, this is page seven, by the way, that you have. Okay. Um, a zoning study, four hundred thousand, importance to city's future. So now we quantify the amount, there's a dollar amount, that is built in, I believe, to this bonding that you're going to consider voting in two weeks. There's also a saltwater intrusion model design of three hundred thousand. It's based on recent experience and New York City's desire to open Lloyd Wells in Queens. This study is critical and may be the most important study we undertake. These are not my words. These are words that are written in the city's budget proposal. And by the way, I want to thank you, Commissioner Morando, for, uh, because when I looked at the, some of the numbers, uh, they're pretty well spot on, so I don't have any questions with the numbers part. I can mirror some concern that people have. My personal concern is, I don't want to vote on anything until I know what's in it. Very simple. So, will we have a, some detail if this four hundred thousand dollars is going to be bonded for of the eight million, two hundred and whatever thousand dollars? Okay, moving on. A total of eleven million, two hundred forty-one thousand, thirty-eight new projects were requested, eight million, nine ninety-one grounded in, um, in the general fund, a million, three in the water fund, in sewer fund, and so on. Capital projects for the eighteen nineteen will include twenty million in New York Rising Community Reconstruction Program Funds. These are funds that do not have to be bonded as payments. That's a good thing. Capital projects for the eighteen nineteen, uh, fiscal year will also include thirty million dollars in FEMA and other grant funds. These funds will, will have to be bonded by the city and will be, and will be reimbursed. I just wanted to say that. I know my time is up. Um, these are not small items. These are big issues. I totally ask for you to have consideration for.
We will have a public hearing next week, uh, two weeks, sorry. Actually, two weeks and a couple days. Uh, the next meeting is moved to Thursday, the twentieth, I think.
Because of the holidays.
The holiday, yes. Yom Kippur.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Um, next is Eddie Broner, I see he is left. Nathaniel Epstein?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, I'm here tonight because, um, it seems like every few months, uh, someone I know from high school out of my age or younger is, uh, is dying of an overdose, heroin or, or prescription drugs. Um, and that's, I wish that were hyperbole, but I mean, if you look at the federal statistics, uh, twelve thousand people died per year, uh, died in twenty seventeen of heroin, almost thirty thousand prescription opiates. Uh, and this is a problem, this is a problem that's getting our tap particularly hard, and as I'm sure you all can see, the federal government is determined to do basically nothing about it. So it's my understanding that we used to have a program here at the hospital called Vex, where, uh, where addicts could get access to, uh, epinephrine and, uh, methadone, you know, drugs that alleviate the effects, uh, withdrawal symptoms. Um, so I'm here to propose that we make an effort to bring that program back, and not only that one, but on New York City is also considering a program where, uh, they would open places where addicts can safely consume their drugs, get access to treatment if they ask for it, and perhaps even have their drugs tested for things like fentanyl and hallucinosis. Um, these are useful harm reduction, uh, strategies. Um, you know, the last one I mentioned doesn't have a whole lot of substance evidence yet because it hasn't tried very much, but I think it's something on the right path and something that we need to consider. Uh, it seems a wasted opportunity to not have programs like, like the ones I mentioned, and also the indoor exchange programs. So I don't know, uh, exactly how to, um, fund things like that. I don't know if you have to push Governor Cuomo or perhaps Nixon, whatever.
You make, you make a very good point as a graduate of Long Beach High School myself. I've lost, you know, I've seen way too many people pass away at a very early age, uh, both locally and, and around here. Uh, unfortunately, opioid treatment is something that the city council has preempted, uh, by the state. Uh, the state heavily regulates opioid treatment centers, and the, the city council has no authority to, to legally regulate opioid treatment. But I personally, I agree that it is, it is a great problem.
Well, if I can, I can just add, and maybe you want to let them, your friends or family know, the city is doing Narcan training as part of the Preparedness Month. So there's an opportunity to register, I think Ryan can tell you the exact link, um, but it's taking place, I think it's the second weekend in September.
Yes.
There's a training, if they register for it, but we'll, uh, professional available for, for that as well. So I would encourage you and your friends, if you haven't already, to become trained. I think it's really, it's really important, it's something that I advocated for, as well as some of the other members of the council, and, and if there's a response for it, then we, I would like to see it continue. I agree that we need to do a number of different things in order to address this issue.
I mean, that's great, and I really appreciate that you guys are doing that, um, you know, and I will probably attend that, even though I'm personally seeing one of those. But I, I just think that we need to, I mean, I know, I get it that our hands are tired, but we need to maybe talk to the governor's office and see if there's anything they can help us with, because I think we die quickly on this. Every, every minute we wait is just a chance of someone else is going to die, someone else we grew up with, someone in their twenties, in their teens. And, uh, it's just becoming excessive, and, uh, I just want to open the dialogue, I want, I just want to, I want us to start talking about as a community and really seriously working on something. So, thank you very much.
Well, just so you, just so you're aware, every police officer, every first responder, EMS, and fire department, and every lifeguard has been trained in Narcan. So we do push the training out as often as possible. We have made, I believe, well over a hundred saves so far, and I encourage everyone to go to this, uh, training because you can do no harm. If you use Narcan on someone that is not under the influence of an opioid, it doesn't hurt them at all. It's just an opioid blocker, a receptor blocker. So, um, it's, it's, it's no liability to it, and you never know where you're going to come across someone that, that, that has overdosed.
That's, that's great, and again, I appreciate, I just feel we need to move towards more, um, less tested strategies that are, that are being considered, that are, you know, being discussed by other cities. I think there's more we can do. I appreciate that.
What do you might be getting asked, correct?
Exactly.
So we're partnering with Narcan, I would encourage you to, to come to bring any of your friends. Um, they're a very organization, it's a long, um, council on alcohol and drug penalty, and you should just come down and help them, uh, or anybody that you know to, to support our program. You definitely do that.
That's great, I just...
Thank you.
I just go to need something in our city that, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would encourage you to come back.
Ms. Liz Trachten.
I'd like to thank everyone for their excellent, uh, Liz Trachten, Long Beach. I'd like to thank everyone this evening for speaking to each of you and their excellent points that they brought up. Um, the young woman from Pennsylvania Avenue, don't know her name, but you really need to put her on some kind of board that gives you information, because she's very smart. Um, okay, I'm, I'm tired, so again, thanks again for, uh, doing this sign-up first before chatting. I would also like to talk about the email I sent to all of you and to the department head of our PR regarding our child videos that are now gone. As David mentioned, they, um, are gone, and no one seems to be responsible for them. And I don't see why no one is outraged by this. Six years, someone is sitting there, now, and they're gone. And no one seems to say that this is okay, that they're just gone. And no one is going to look into paying the money to U Street to get them back. Not even an option. Did you even ask Mr. Tepper? Did you, did you ask him, could you get them back? No one asked. I'm concerned for a number of reasons that they're gone. Number one being that we'll only have audio recordings available, and how will the city plan for alternate formats for people with disabilities? Ms. Goodwin mentioned the intentional release, that's what it's called, about the balloons, intentional release.
Thank you.
Surf Rider is going to be doing something. I believe that a couple of you may have been addressed about the issue as well, and I hope that it can move quickly. I'm following up for Mindy, um, last week, the last council meeting. She is developing Linkin Parking. Have you heard anything about that? Okay. And we, I think, so, I've mentioned this a number of times, each time I come up, people... I'm just tired, I'm coming up and talking about the same thing. So we said that we would write it down and you would address them. Did you say that, yes or no? Mr. Rama?
The Linkin Parking?
Yeah. People that come up for Good and Malfair, they ask the same questions over and over and over again. That we would sit, we would have a list, and you would answer them in a format.
I think we've discussed it as a council, I don't know that we've changed our policy.
Did, was there a discussion?
I've had discussions about how we respond and how we answer questions and should we post them, yes.
And so the answer would be, then you're not going to be communicating that with, with us?
We answer the questions the best we can, and we follow up if there's a question, a specific question that we can't answer.
So, uh, in regard to Linkin Parking, there was...
There was a bunch of emails that went around about the Linkin Parking, I was going to wait till the commission would come back and tell you exactly what happened. Does anyone know?
I just want to address the other piece. I think the issue is past practice, is that, um, there are questions that are, that are asked, and then as past practice, we would ask that someone would take the information down so that we could follow up with that individual, all right? And from there, that individual was contacted to a member of the city, and that's how the information gets out. I think the issue is, it's not, it has not been consistent. We can't say that it's not happening, because it has been happening, it's just that it has not been consistent. So I think we need, we need to work on the consistency in terms of that. But I do know, as everyone else is nodding here, um, there were emails, there were communications going back and forth with Mindy, and I don't have that information, we don't have that information.
I don't remember what the resolution was, but I know that we talked, I agree with you.
I know we talked about it, I just don't remember.
Right, it just wasn't a resolution, it was something that we were doing, and, again, showing transparency and showing that we really appreciate community engagement.
Thank you. Ron Rama, my way home.
Uh, Ms. Kathleen O'Leary.
Hi, Kathleen O'Leary, Long Beach. Um, first I want to start with the, uh, three things I want to speak about. The Army Corps of Engineers, uh, I was concerned about the noise level, and I happened to be on the beach when they were filling the beach next to me with sand, and it was silent, and it was really, actually very interesting to watch it happen with the crab, uh, device and so forth. The other thing I want to talk about has to do with an article about the permit and expense requirements for event organizations, and event, events that are organized. Um, in the Herald, there is, um, an Irish Day breakdown with, with figures. So if you do a cost benefit analysis on it, um, it costs the city a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars to put it on in police sanitation. Uh, the organizers are saying that they pay between fifteen or twenty thousand dollars a year to the city, which means that they get a break of eighty thousand to seventy-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money, if I'm not mistaken. Okay? And then the output of this event is between, um, five and ten thousand dollars going to charity. Um, I don't think that is cost beneficial to the city, um, mainly to the city. Am I mistaken? Is it the taxpayers who are paying the difference between what they pay and what it costs?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that, that's amazing. Okay? Uh, again, I'm a cancer survivor, I know they donate to cancer organizations, a lot of them do, but that's a little bit excessive, if you ask me. Okay? And that's just one organization. Um, the last topic is, I would like to know, how and where are we advertising for the controller's position, and has anyone been interviewed for it?
Yeah, it's, uh, I guess the city manager, or once we find a city manager, would probably hire the controller.
Why? I don't think they're dependent on each other.
They have done some interviews, and, uh, but the city council is not involved with the controller search. That's, that's, that's not us.
Yeah, we, we are setting up appointments this week to interview five of the interviews.
Okay, so we, we don't have to wait for the city manager?
Well, one, we have, we just find a controller. They took the job at first, and we decided, and why? Because of the not having a full-time city manager who may come in and want their own person.
Really? All right, all right. You know, I, I, I don't see where they're so connected. Um, you know, maybe that person had the luxury to be able to walk away, but there's plenty of qualified people out there. I would, I really feel a lack of a city controller. Um, I, I feel that you've covered both your jobs well, um, but the controller, there's really no one to ask questions about, um, who's certifying all this money information? And, um, I think it's easier to find a controller than it is to find a city manager. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, can you speak about the Linkin, hey, temp spot, is that rectified? Yeah, okay, it's not, okay. Okay, um, that's it for this evening. Thanks, Long Beach.